I'd like to call the June State Board of Education meeting to order. I would like to acknowledge that Michelle Dombrowski is not here today. All other members are in attendance. I'd like to welcome everybody that's here for the meeting today and those that are listening online. We appreciate everybody having interest in our meeting today. The mission of the Kansas State Board of Education is to prepare Kansas students for lifelong success through rigorous quality academic instruction, career training, and character development, according to each student's gifts and talents. The vision is for Kansas to lead the world in the success of each student. I'd like to ask if you'd now pause with us for a moment of silence. Would you please now stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you very much. We're going to look at the agenda, and I do have a couple of amendments in the agenda, and they are all in the consent agenda. So I'll go over those real quick, and then we'll take a motion to approve. In 15I, again in the consent agenda, the award amount for AmeriCorps grantee Kansas Department of Wildlife Tourism, Parks and Tourism should be $354,644. I believe, if I remember right, Peggy, that's about $7,000 difference. And then in 15M and N, and Peggy sent you an email about some of the changes as far as having to do with bond. So in 15N and M, the word tentative needs to be stricken from the Barber County North USD 254 bond and capital improvement request. And then additional consent items will be 15U and 15V, which are final order authorizations for Conway Springs USD 356 to hold a bond election and to receive capital improvement state aid. The district was granted tentative authority last month. So a lot of this has to do with how the law reads now of tentative and final order. So it will be a little confusing until we are able to, if there's any future changes in the law. So those copies of that information are in your folders. So if you want to look at those consent items further, you certainly are welcome to do so. Are there any other changes for today's agenda? Steve Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to respectfully request a pull of item 15H, deals with requests from USD 500 KCK for vacancy fills for the 2019-2020 transition year. I'd like to pull that for further discussion, please.
Okay, so which item was that again?
15H is in Henry.
15H, okay, I'm going to read that. It's act on request from USD 500 KCK and USD 364 Marysville to fill vacancies under the prior Coalition of Innovative School District guidelines during the 2019-2020 school year. So that's been a request to pull that agenda item. Is there a second? Okay, Anne, there's a second for that. All in favor of pulling that? Please raise your hand. Opposed? Okay, that looked like seven to two, if my count is right. So we will pull item 15H.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, any other changes to the agenda? If not, I would accept a motion to approve. Jim Porter, second. Deana Horst. All in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, looks like a nine-zero. Okay, the May minutes are in your packet. And are there any corrections or additions to the May Board of Education meetings minutes? If not, we'd have a motion to approve. Jim McNeese, second. Ben Jones, all in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, nine-zero. Thank you very much. Okay, we would like to welcome Commissioner Watson to the podium, and he's going to give us his commissioner's report. So welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I might just say, well, first, welcome to Deana. I know she had a late night, early morning, so we're glad that she's here, back home with us. Anne brought this up with me in an email, but I think it's true for all of you. The change in the bond and interest law is extremely complicated, and those of you that sat on that committee know it's very hard to understand. And that interpretation of that law is, you know, you can approve when you don't have money, and then you put them all in a list order. And if you have over 40 years, there's so many nuances to that law. So if you get confused about it, I know that Dale and Craig will try their best to continue to explain it. It's a very confusing law, and unless you just really study it a lot, it's just hard to understand. So I appreciate all of you, I think, struggling with that at times and trying to make sense of it. It is difficult. Again, as we always do, a big lift for all of us is how are we going to try to continue to move an entire system of 286 school districts as we focus on the success of each student? I'm going to take you through three very distinct sets of data. So they come from different sources, but I think they, they're new pieces of data in the last 60 days nationally and locally. And then talk to you about what I think we can do, myself and you, in the next 30 days, the next 45 days, to really help move some things forward. I'm going to share, and we could have an hour-long discussion about the two charts I'm going to share with you right now. So please understand, I'm going to try to give you a very quick overview. What you're seeing here are wage differences for women from the year 1963 to 2012. This data's actually been updated to 2017. I'll go over that briefly. And I just want to tell you, there's lots of things you're seeing here. If you look at the bottom-line graph, those are high school dropouts. That's in the dark blue. The red are high school graduates, the kind of light green-gray are some college or associate degree. The yellow gold are baccalaureate degree, and the light teal-blue are professional degrees, lawyers, doctors, some of the master's degrees, PhDs. Very clearly for women, you can get into the early 1980s, and there's no difference economically, or very little difference economically, between dropouts of high school and doctors. And the reason for that is, you can go all the way back to really the World War II, is that women, for a long period of time, held occupations outside of the home that were fairly suppressed in terms of economics: teachers, social workers, secretaries, nurses. You can see, though, from the late 80s, that starts to change dramatically, as they start to enter other professions: engineering, more doctors. And so by the time you get to 2012, you see a fairly distinct stratification. Now, I'm going to show you men in a second, but I just wanted to point that out. What I want you to focus on is 2012. And what you see, in a very short generation, whether you're fairly young, and I say fairly young would be under the age of 45 or 50, or you're older than that, if you just simply go back to your parents-to-grandparents generation, it was a long era of stability where education mattered, but not a lot. What mattered was your work experience and your work ethic and some other things. It clearly now, those still matter, but what clearly matter also are the level of education, as you can see there. And what you don't see from 2012 to 17, the bottom has dropped out for dropouts of high school and high school graduates only. It continues to trend downward, while some college and associate degrees are trending upward at a fairly decent pace, and the others are continuing to trend upward. Now, this is females. You're going to see the basic same trends for male, except you can go, when you go back to '63, you can already see the stratification, right? Because they were just in different occupations. What I want you to notice here is that if you don't graduate from high school, or barely graduate from high school, and you are a male, you're economically much worse off than you are if you were a female. You see that? And I don't know if that has to do with what men traditionally go into fields versus what females, even in 2012. I don't know the answer to that. But it speaks to why we have to focus on graduation of high school and post-secondary effectiveness, because education today matters. And we can argue that, should it or shouldn't, but it matters. I mean, you look at the earning power in 2012 for males that drop out of high school, it is less than it is/was in 1963. High school graduates are barely above what they were in 1963 earning power. That is a scary proposition. So I call these our big rocks. If you're fans of Stephen Covey, you'll know that analogy really well. Our overall goal, yes, we'd love to have 100% of kids graduate high school with skills. You have those skills lined up, you know, for everyone. 100% of those kids, we'd love to execute their post-secondary plan, their plan, whatever that plan is. No, we don't need everyone to go to four years of college. But if you just wanted to look at the landscape, let's just say aspirational 45% go to a four-year college, whether they started a two-year or not, and 45% do not. They go to, they end their career with multiple certificates or a two-year college. About 5% go into apprenticeship programs: electrical, being an electrician, or the John Deere program that Jean and I heard about when we were out at Ulysses. So some kids are going to go into great apprenticeship programs. About 4% can enlist in the military. And 1% of our special needs populations are going to transition into a longer period. You see that at the Schools for the Blind and Deaf and their transition programs. You see that with, like, Project Stay for autistic kids. Perfectly a great plan, is you're trying to help them be self-sufficient, live on their own, be a productive member of society. Now, these ratios are never going to be exactly this. If you go to Santa Fe Trail, if you go to Eureka, you know, if you go to Goddard, they're all going to vary a little bit, but these are kind of our aspirational, to help kids get that economic power. Now, as you know, we love the Georgetown Policy Institute because they do just some really good research. I'm going to give you some very sobering research as it applies to the United States and schooling today. So this is what we want, based upon the economics. Here's some data. Be happy to share this report with you. This looks at, when kids came into kindergarten, who were the kids that were really good in math? The top half in math already, when they came into kindergarten? And then it tracked them to eighth grade. I'm just going to cut to the chase. Basically, what Georgetown is saying is that it doesn't matter how much you know, it matters how much money you have. And that no matter, I'm giving you the big rocks, there are, right, there are exceptions to this rule. Go the far left, those are the poorest kids on the far left. 49% of the poorest kids that started out in the top half in mathematics had lost, were in the lowest by the time they hit eighth grade. Only 30% of the kids that were in poverty that came into kindergarten across the United States in the top half in mathematics, already there, were in this top half when they got to eighth grade. But yet 74% of the wealthy kids were. So for me, a historian, remember very clearly Johnson's War on Poverty in the 1960s. It's, it is not, if you look at this data, and then the one I'm going to share with you next, it clearly Georgetown is saying, what matters is, do your parents have money? Because if they do, you have, your chances of having success are better than just if you have skill. That should resonate with all of us. Look at this, same data set. Now, we're looking at 10th graders with top math scores. These are kids with top math scores and low math scores. So if you're top math scores, what do you become? Engineers, doctors, pharmacists, all right? If you're low math scores, we were talking out in the hallway, you don't get to go to welding school, right? You need to know. So the top chart are the wealthiest kids. Wealthiest kids. The bottom chart are the poorest kids. I want you to look at this. The wealthiest kids, look at the top. The wealthiest kids that have below median math scores, meaning in the lowest half, 46% of those kids go on to four years of college. The wealthiest kids in 10th grade with the lowest math scores, 46% of those kids. Come down to the next chart. The highest performing kids that are in poverty, only 43% of those kids go on to four years of college. And they're the high, they outperform the wealthy kids, and the wealth, more wealthy kids are going to four years of college than the poor kids. And Georgetown says money matters. If you're below median, if you're above median, 85% of those kids. This is an important study. Now, I'm not going to go in, Georgetown says there are things that matter. Good quality early childhood really matters in their study. It has lasting effects. It really does matter. You have to do some things in K-12. It takes a lot of money. It takes a lot of focus. It takes a lot of effort, and it's hard. Because poverty is hard to break, especially generational poverty, and this points this out, that if you have parents that have done well economically, they tend to do well. All right, so we know you need more than one piece of paper. It looks like we've got our work cut out for us. And now I'm going to share with you some local data. I don't know how many of you are familiar with the group Enterprise KC. I know that Kathy and Jim are a little bit, because this is data that they presented to the governor's task force the last time we met. This is a group made up of the enterprise companies in the greater Kansas City area. So what is an enterprise company? It's a company housed in Kansas City that has international reach. So who would that be? Sprint, Applebee's, Cerner, I'm just giving you a few of those, all right? It's not a local company. They are in Kansas City, but they have internet. And they surveyed their top management, so the CEOs, their boards, and their middle management. So those hundreds to thousands of people within those companies, and said, what are the issues? First of all, they need 3,600 workers today in Kansas City, today. Skilled workers, they cannot find, they cannot grow their business. Now, here's what they said. This is, so this was harsh when Jim and Kathy and I heard this data. This is harsh. Says K-12 and higher ed, they lumped us together. Says, you have little awareness of the severity of the problem that we're facing. Your supply, your available supply does not, is not equipped to meet our demand. Your curriculum is antiquated, and you're doing nothing about it. You have a lack of connection between the academia and your customers, which are us, because we're hiring the people that want to go into that. Now, we can get angry, or I'm just, I'm giving you the report, as they gave it. Few other things. Your graduates are not workforce-ready. They lack real-world experience. They lack soft skills like you can't believe. You've heard that before, haven't you? Curriculum is antiquated. It's taught by people that've never taught, been in the real world. Academia struggles with the relationships. It doesn't move fast enough. And you must train kids differently. They use the word extraprendial learning. We would call that project-based or real-world learning. You may have seen that in our pillars of redesign. And industry's willing to partner with you, but guess what? We're tired of waiting, and we may go it alone. We've got to change, according to them. Number-one barrier is the lack of well-qualified and well-suited talent, whether it's out of K-12 or higher ed. The industry comments apply across K-12 and higher ed. Again, real-world learning will help you with that. You need to be agile. You tend to be more standardized, and your goal is sustain over a large population. Now, again, I'll share this with you. You can have this, these slides. I showed you the economic data. I showed you the difference between wealth and poverty, what that makes, and then I'm showing you the demand of at least KC Enterprise. And I believe, Jim, because you were just down with the workforce people in Wichita, that Kathy, they're going to tell you the same things in the Wichita grade or Wichita area. And that's where we have more of our cluster of people. You've been listening, all right? But I think what we have to impress upon our school districts, we have to move at a faster pace. And it's hard, all right, on all of us. I'm going to explain to you, I think, why it's really hard. We've got some school districts doing it. You know what, a lot. In two years from the time we launched Mercury, of 66 school districts, over 160 schools. We need to push them harder. We need to push them deeper. We need to push them faster. And there will be pushback as we push them. Change is never without pushback. So Jean and I had the great opportunity to be at Ulysses High School graduation. I was at several, and I'm sure you all at several. One thing that struck me about the majority of high school graduations is, not true to Ulysses, but it's true most, we honor a valedictorian and salutatorian, and oftentimes they get to speak. You become a valedictorian and salutatorian because you are the highest in your class relative to GPA and whatever courses you took. It is a centuries-old, respected celebration. And I'm not opposed to that at all, but Jean and I got to see something really unique in Ulysses. They didn't have one. That was a little bit unusual. They recognized four young people that had 4.0s, and they stood up on the front row. And they were recognized during the ceremony. In the same ceremony, they brought up 21 young people that had everything from certificates to associate degrees to baccalaurates. You know Braxton. He's the baccalaureate from Harvard that's been accepted to Columbia and Harvard Law School already at age 17. None of those 19 were valedictorians or salutatorians, because they didn't have 4.0. One young lady, Karen, graduated on Wednesday before the Sunday with these certificates. She has OSHA certification. She was a CNA. She was a CMA. She was a phobiatrist. She was a radiology technician, and she graduated from Seward County with an associate degree. She had no honor cords on. She was not a 4.0. And her parents and she were so excited, because you know what else Karen is? She's an RN, not recognized, because she's only 18, and you have to be 19 before you can set for the RN boards. Success wears its way differently, if we just look at it, right? And I know we're trying to do that as quickly as possible. One of those is this. So I'm going to shift now to money, and Dale's going to talk to you a lot about this. And the change in school boards, and the change in superintendents, and the change here. This is the base state aid. There's other, I'm not, this isn't to get into argument about money, okay? I mean, this is just to show you base state aid. Yes, there are waitings. Yes, there's been increase in those waitings. But in 2009, base state aid started to go down. And this was recession, all right? It then went up slightly and then got, you know, sustained and platformed. But basically, the years 2008, '09, until we got to 2017, '18, we were declining in the amount of money being given, or flat at best. And if you were in Fredonia and you were losing any kids, you were cutting budgets. So I ask you this. Of the superintendents of the school districts you serve, how many of them were in place prior to 2009? Or how many of them have changed out? How many of them were even in Kansas prior, in a superintendent role, prior to 2009? So they weren't with you, but they were somewhere, and they moved. My guess is very little. Here's what they have known. They know how to cut budgets. They know how to get people together, streamline, where are we going to cut? How are we going to cut? And guess what? We're in a different era. Not only do we need to change, now we have all these forces, there's money that the legislature and the governors, because there's been multiple governors through this, multiple have put in. We went into 4,006, we went to 4,100, and here's what the legislature just passed as they left office, and the governor signed, and we're, of course, we're waiting for a court decision, right? That may even take this higher. May, we don't know. I don't think they're going to take it lower. This is what's already been out there. And now we're going to have a large infusion of money. In fact, if you look at this over time, it's almost going to go up $1,000 a student over the life of that school finance formula, even if the court doesn't have any more money. And I'm willing to bet that most school boards were not in place prior to '08, '09. Most superintendents were not. And we don't know now how to allocate money, large amounts of money coming in, to make sure that we are meeting those needs I just showed to you, right? Because we're used to cutting budgets. I got to figure out how to do more with less. I've got to figure out what's essential, what's not. And now I'm reversing that process. And by the way, I have never lived through that process, so it's a new process for me. We need to help schools understand that. It's okay, just like I told you. You may not understand the new bond and interest law. It's complicated. It's new. It's okay to say that. Dale and Craig will be working with you, will be working. But let me just give you two areas. All right, 6.5% new money is going to schools. July 1, they will get in their budget 6.5% increase of their entire general fund. We need to increase teacher salaries. Because the quality of the teacher matters. And we've fallen behind, and now we have an opportunity to increase that. So if your entire general fund goes up 6.5%, you've got some other needs. Maybe we need to restore some of the cuts. Maybe I need to add some councilor social workers. Maybe we need to think about early childhood. Maybe I've got to put a little bit of money in some contingency reserve, because I ate all my reserves down, right? But you're, let me just ask you, was, we can help people out in the school boards and superintendents. Generally, I'm giving you ballpark, teachers make up half of the budget. Now, is that true universally? No, but, you know, maybe 52% in one district, 49% in another, but generally around 50% of the budget are teachers. We should be able to give substantial increases to teachers. The money is there. That's point number one. Point number two, we need, and the legislature is asking us, and we need to respond. Not only raise, we get a better quality of teacher, we can look to young people and say, this is a profession you want to be in. We can look to veterans that may want to change profession, you, you know, this is a good profession to change into. And then use the other money to target kids not being successful in different ways, to inspire them to do those, to make sure that it's not about who your parents are. And that we are research-based in how we go and do that. And there's lots of research, but that's a different skill set for boards and superintendents and assistant superintendents and principals to have to deal with than they have been dealing with since 2009. Does that make sense? We've shifted, and we're in the early stages of that shift. But you can help. You can help by saying, it's okay. It's okay to give bus drivers good raises too, right? I mean, it's okay. I mean, it's okay to give those teachers. It's okay to focus money on, I'll use early childhood, because we know we get a big bang for a buck. It's okay to put internships into place like, you know, Wichita is doing with Textron and Spirit. It's okay to put some money into those things to impact kids that are not being successful. You have the money to do that. Here's what's not okay. Putting it in reserves. Putting it, moving it into capital outlay. You have a capital outlay budget. We need to spend the money effectively and efficiently. And that's a different skillset than what we've had to do. Jim Porter and I lived through that era, you know? We did it. And it's a different skillset. And again, Dale and Craig will talk to you about that. They're going to talk to other people about it. But with that, Madam Chair, I'd be happy to stand for questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. All that information was very interesting. And I'm sure the board members will look forward to having the slides. And some of them, I want to study some of those a little bit more. I may have some more questions later. Looks like Jim Porter has a question.
Not really a question. I just want to reinforce something that the commissioner said. I visited with Dale this morning and he's, I may be stealing his thunder. But there was a huge increase in the amount of money going to capital outlay, transferred to capital outlay and contingency reserve. Across the state, there's about three quarters of a billion dollars in reserve in those two accounts. And if we continue to do that under the scrutiny we're having now, instead of spending, instead of spending that money to benefit kids directly now, we're going to, there are going to be consequences. And I want to applaud you for telling us that we need to do something about it. And I want to know how I can help.
Mr. Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to ask about the arrogance of educators. It seems to me that those of us in education deal with the notion that we're the only ones who can do the job. So I want to frame it in terms of the OVT, that we had an initiative to bring in outside validation teams to help us evaluate what we're doing in our schools. And somehow, outside validation teams got changed to outside visitation teams because you know, people on the outside, they don't know what we do. We're the experts in the classroom. We don't need anybody else looking over our shoulder. I would submit that has to change. And I would submit that part of your presentation from business suggests that very thing. What do you think?
You know, Mr. Roberts, all of our good friend Ken Waller served on this board a long time. And before I came to this position, Ken was my representative on the state board. And my first, we had lunch a lot of times. And Ken said, you know, oftentimes I just look at this different because I'm not an educator. I just look at it from a business perspective. And I just look at it different. I, you know, I need to learn. But we need to learn both ways. I am, as you are, fully committed, committed in my life to public education. And I care deeply about the kids that we all serve. But I don't have all the answers and neither do you and neither does business. But collectively, we all have been saying the same things. We've got to move a little quicker in the directions that everyone has agreement on. We can always argue about the little things we disagree on. But we have agreement on a lot of things that I think we can move faster on. The point of this is we've got some money now to do some things really well. But we've been in an era where we don't know, we've never had money. And that's going to require us to learn a different skillset. All of us learn a different skillset, how to apply that effectively.
Janet Wall. Thank you, Madam Chair. Randy, what you said concerned me regarding business. Particularly, you said on curriculum. But my thought, I kept thinking, I thought, and I hope I understand this correctly, but I thought every one of our standards, and if I'm incorrect, I think we need to change it. I thought we always had business people at the table on our standards review committees. I remember several of them, I know we did. But if we don't have them on all, and maybe some of our other committees, if we don't have them, we need to look at that. But am I incorrect in what I thought?
We have business on a lot of them, but not all of them. So certainly in the CTE areas, yes. Certainly in the computer science standards that are going right now, the implementation, yes. But we haven't always, let's say in language arts, we have higher ed represented, but not history, government. Not always have we had business represented on those. But Janet, I would say this. The word curriculum gets bannered around a lot about, you know, the pure definition of curriculum and how people use it functionally. What really, the enterprise KC, as we heard the presentation was saying is, you need to have kids applying that knowledge over and over and over. Book knowledge by itself isn't what we need. And they're using curriculum in that manner. And so when they say extraparrentral learning or project based or, you need them working right alongside business. And they need to apply those skills over and over. And we're getting them, whether it's out from you or from higher ed, and they're theoretical and they don't have this other pliability skill, soft skills. That's what they said. I'm not here to defend them one way or the other. But that's, you know, that was, I think that was their definition, Janet, of curriculum.
Thank you. Okay, we've got a few members and then we will need to get to open forum. So Jim McNeese.
Randy, thanks for your presentation. It was, it's both timely and it's been important for many years. But I'm going to take a little different tact on it and focus on the area that you described, that business reported back that education doesn't know much about what they're doing and they're kind of archaic. And the communication line between business and industry and education and education and business industry is a two way street. They don't know much about us. We don't know much about them. We had a board meeting down in Wichita, you know, a year and a half ago. For many of us who are on the board, for many of you, it was probably the first time you actually walked on a factory floor. You know, first time you ever saw inside a corporation and manufacturing corporation. There are a lot of individual initiatives going on. Until we decide to become partners, which I think we're deciding right now or have decided in pockets, to get to know each other. You know, we demand, we depend on each other. They depend on us. We depend on them. But to become partners, we have to listen to each other. And I would hope that we will take this to the next step and support those initiatives. And I know there's several in Wichita and Kansas City. And there are pockets of them around the state. But it's even more than that. It's the universities and administration programs. Nobody sits down with, or presents to principals, this is how you do business partnerships. Most principals, and I don't mean this in a derogatory way, they might have a few partnerships that are easy to work. But they're not partnerships that get to the root of, I need to know what you need, you know, so I can bring it back in here. Where teachers are actually going into doing internships and finding out externships. And where business is coming in and not doing a show and tell, but actually learning about who we are. Because Janet, yeah, we do standards. But I got to tell you, standards aren't, I don't sit there and walk in in the morning as a principal and say, oh man, what standards am I going to do today? You know, yeah, they put them together. But then we ask the business people to go back and we'll take it from here. And that shouldn't be it. The standard should be an integral part every day. And it should be things we say every day. I'm going to, what standards am I going to do today? But it should be in partnership with business after the standards are approved and should be implemented. It's, the whole word comes down to working together, you know? And now my challenge to us is, how do we take this information? And how do we move it forward where it's not just meaningful, but it becomes a reality? And how do we get the colleges and universities involved? How do we get all of K or pre-K and everybody else, as long as they're in education, working together with business in a meaningful way? There are a lot of pockets going on. But how do we, as a board, make that a systemic part of who we are and what we do? Because we don't give any awards to schools, or not really. We don't say, hey, who's got the best business partnerships? Who's got their faculty? Who's taken their faculty onto a plant floor or into a hospital or into a, into a construction company? Who's, math teachers don't do that as a general rule. I don't want, not trashing math teachers. History teachers don't do it either. We just don't do it. So how do we break that down? What's our next step, Randy? Not just whining about it.
Last month, you saw examples of people taking that. You saw Fredonia and Boye saying, you know, we'll offer some summer programs. And we'll immerse that. So you're learning skills alongside with businesses in a hospital, a medical facility. We take you to KU.
Those are like weeds right now. I don't mean to be antagonistic, but they're more like weeds in the field than they are. You know, you can pull the weeds out. I can show you, hey, got great weeds here. But.
We've got to have scalability.
How do we, how do we make this an urgent element of who we are and how we operate, you know, for the benefit of our state and the children and students that we support, we recognize?
So we're juggling a lot of balls in the air, trying to get, on the details of all this, trying to get that done. But what we have to have are scalable programs that we can then replicate. When we get into the accreditation phase of redesign, we've got to be able to just replicate those, right? In general, with local flair. Because you're right, we've got pockets of great excellence. But we've got to sustain that. And we've got to move more toward sustainability of scalability. Don't have a magic bullet on that, but that's what we have to move toward.
Well, I think we should move for it and with great enthusiasm, you know, and tell people as a board and as a state, you're going to do this. You're going to play nice. We're all in the same sandpit. You're going to play nice. Let's do it.
Ben Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The CTE pathways, how often do we correlate them with actual certifications when we formulate them together?
The federal Perkins requires us to take a look at that. We don't, from a state level, there's been some efforts to try to look at that as relates to funding. But point five funding. So additional funding goes for any pathway, any student in a pathway. But we'd like for those pathways to move toward high needs, high demand areas. But all pathways are treated equal on the state level right now. Some people would argue that ought to change, Ben, to be more reflective of what the economy is in Kansas. Other people say, well, that should be left alone. I think that that's been debated. The truth of it is what determine pathways oftentimes are what teacher, what teachers, what teaching staff do you have? What are their expertise? And that tends to determine pathways.
But do we?
A little simplistic.
Yeah. But we talk about preparing students and that you're talking about the RN. Is that a, did that come through the pathway set of courses? Or did that come from outside the pathway?
You know, I don't know the answer. That Jean might, because I don't know that specific school districts.
I've had some business people in my area that have actually called me Sunday evening. I missed about 45 minutes of the Tonys on this phone call. As an arts person, it was a big deal. About why are students, yeah, we have these pathways, but does it lead to an actual certification in the path that they're doing? And are we even setting them up to succeed in that? Or are they just getting courses to say, hey, I completed pathway, but it means, it doesn't mean much in the industry side of it?
No, we are trying to tighten the certificate with the pathway. But there are many pathways that aren't in high demand fields. And there are some that are in high demand.
Ann Mall.
Thank you. Yeah, as we meet, the KCTE is meeting right now in this building to approve some new updated pathways. But if there is a certificate available, they make sure that these end in one. There are some like government that doesn't have a certification, but most of them do have certifications. You know, and the thing that was brought up about the standards committees, I served on one in the 90s, which is a long time ago. But we had one parent and one business person and everybody else was educators. So recently, there's one under review right now. And I had a number of people call and go, if you're doing this area, I want in. So I wrote and said, I have two people that want to be on this revision committee. Oh, no, they're all educators. We don't need any help with this. Thank you very much. I finally got them to allow one person to set in as an ad hoc person from the community. But if we don't have business and community leaders and parents on every standards committee, we're really missing an opportunity to not only get their input, but to expand the knowledge of the public about what the heck we're doing. So that's just a comment. My question is, you know, I'm out there all the time talking to school boards about going to the moon with us. And I know my hardest cells are going to be the rich districts. How do we push these rich districts who think, I've got a handle on this. I don't need to be going to the moon with you, to get off the dime and go do this?
Let me comment back on your comment. You know, if you go back to the pillars of redesign, social, emotional embedded, personalize the experience, engage our business, our families and our communities different, exactly what you're talking about, and make real world application and projects. We have to model that as an agency. So see, we're having to change too. Everyone's going to have to change in this. And we need all people at the table. And then we need to listen to other viewpoints. So critical, both ways, both ways. So how do we get school districts to do it? I think, you know, you, we're going to hold people accountable to post-secondary effective rates, graduation and those things through accreditation. We're going to have a recognition system that starts to recognize those areas as of this fall. And one of those things that you know is we have leveraged that poverty level within those. So we've said that high poverty districts, Coffeyville, has a different road to go down than say, Andover. Both challenging, but different clientele. But when you take into effect the economics, you level that playing field as to how you look at their data. I just think we have to keep encouraging. We have to continue to help everyone understand. That's why I said, superintendents and boards weren't in their place prior to 08, 09 for the most part. So this is a new landscape and everyone's trying to understand it just like you're trying to understand bond and interest. It's, and we need to help them understand as much as we can. And there'll be frustrations, but I'm optimistic too, Jim. And I am optimistic. I think we just need to continue to have conversations and tell the story, Ann.
Yeah. And we need to, I mentioned to Dale already, to keep pushing for this first 15. I mean, that level's a playing field for these low income kids to get the post-secondary training. The first 15 hours of college free for every high school student that we tried to get last year and didn't get anywhere. We didn't get anywhere this year because there's a lot going on with funding. But we could get started with like offering the first three or six hours free for virtually no money. I mean, it's, that's pretty cheap and you get your toe in the door. I just think we really have to push for that.
There will be lots of disagreements on the little minute details. We can't lose sight over the big picture of where, from our standpoint, the kids that we serve and the families we serve. And from the business standpoint, the generation of the economy and the growing their business, they're mutually agreeable goals. Ours is looking at the person going into that and they're looking at the business. That's the big picture. We'll disagree on the details. That's okay. We ought to, way over time.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. We appreciate the information and the report. I'm sure we'll have some additional conversation about it. I now declare the Citizens Open Forum of the Kansas State Board of Education meeting open at 10:49. The state board provides this opportunity for citizens to share views about topics of interest or issues currently being considered by the state board. The state board asks speakers to identify themselves by name and the name of the group they represent, if applicable. The state board also asks that each speaker focus their remarks on issues or topics. Personal attacks will not be tolerated. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes. Any board, excuse me, questions will be asked for clarification. Our first speaker is Katie Copal, and actually, that's our only speaker. So welcome, Katie. We're glad to have you here today.
Can you hear me now? Great. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I am Katie Copal. I am the Deputy Assistant Secretary of State for Communication and Policy for Secretary of State Scott Schwab. I appear before you this morning to brief you on a new program we are rolling out called Students Serve that encourages high school students to volunteer as poll workers. Since taking office in January, our team has spent a considerable amount of time visiting with local election officials on resources that they might need. One of the items we've most consistently heard is the need for poll workers. As we've worked to identify, work, and then solve the problem, one of the realizations we came to is that high school students are a largely untapped resource. As you well know, having a good GPA and solid test scores is no longer good enough to get into a competitive post-secondary education institution. Students are expected to be well-rounded and/or civically engaged. So we have worked with several education organizations. We're thrilled to have the Kansas Association of School Boards, the Kansas National Education Association, the Kansas State High School Activities Association, and the United School Administrators of Kansas onboard as program participants. I would be remiss if I didn't give a shout out to Leah Filter. She was a, was our first supporter of this program and quickly brought on the others. So I wanted to express our gratitude for her, for her guidance and expertise and coming to you guys today. Our hope is together, we will work together to support this program and raise awareness of it among administrators and educators. I do want to make it abundantly clear, this is not a mandate. You don't need another mandate. We just want to work together to provide another opportunity to students while also helping our local election officials with the resources they need. We are in the early stages of development. We are anticipating a fall rollout, but we did feel it was appropriate to brief you on the program and, if necessary, get your support. Included today, I have provided a program overview, application, my business card, and can also make those available to you electronically. With that, I will be happy to stand for any questions you might have.
Well, Katie, I think this is very exciting. I think it's a great opportunity for our high schools to get involved. We have had, and I think I just read it yesterday, Randy, something about the increase in the, share that information if.
The increase in voter participation for our youngest people in the last election, I believe, some of you would know the data intimately. I think we're the second state, second highest now in the union in terms of registration of voters 18 to 24. And we used to be at the bottom in the last election. So that's really a good sign as we have more participation in the electoral process.
And one of our focus at the State Board has been civic engagement. So this, I think this fits right in. I'm sure all board members would really like to encourage their districts. So I would just, I'm going to go out on a limb and ask you to send electronically this information to Peggy, and she'll get it to us. I'm already envisioning getting this information to my districts. I'm sure other board members are also. I think this is a great way to get our young folks involved. So appreciate your presentation today. Steve, do you have a question or comment?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The application says you have to be 16 years of age to do this poll worker position?
Yes, sir.
So what is the distinction then between a poll worker and an election judge? Do you have to be 18 or 21 to be a judge?
That is up to the county officials to decide. We look at it as they, they are there to be an assistant. They're not the ones in charge. But each poll, polling place, excuse me, has an election administrator. They will work under that and report to them. I also do want to note that at the age of 16 in Kansas, you can register to vote, but your application will be considered on hold until you become 18 years old in a voting age. So that's why they're allowed to participate at 16 or 17.
And then will the decisions on how much pay these people get be at the county level?
Yes, it does vary by county level. Some counties will pay minimum wage, others go up to $15, $16.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Jim Porter.
Madam Chairman, thank you. This, since this directly fits within our civic engagement goals, I would hope that in the future, at some appropriate time, we may consider actually sanctioning this program, becoming part of the, part of those that do that. And I would request that we do that at some point, at the appropriate time.
Well, and I would maybe suggest that Randy have you or somebody from your office work with our, Dawn Gifford, I don't know who else would be in that, but Jessica Noble, to really see how we can do and what we can do to support it. I think probably, I mean, this is exciting to me, so.
Thank you. We're happy to work with whoever you deem appropriate.
That'd be great. Well, thank you very much. We appreciate you being here and making us aware of this program. It's a great opportunity for our young people. Okay, State Board Citizen Open Forum is closed at 10:55. We'd like to thank our speaker today for sharing their views with the board, and the State Board will determine if any issues should be addressed as an agenda item at a future meeting. So thank you very much. Okay, our next agenda item will be our update from the School for the Deaf and the School for the Blind. And John, I believe you are up first.
Good morning, Madam Chair, good morning, Board. Good to see you again. I want to be cognizant of time and move quickly. I have a number of slides that include both data and photos. This morning, I'll be focusing on extended school year and outreach. I think that was of particular interest of the Board, so I want to make sure to cover those areas. The first thing I want to talk about is our goals, and don't get lost in this graphic. You might be hypnotized, but on the outside are the goals that we had told you that we would be working on a couple of years ago now, I guess. And that continues to be our focus. And I think each of these goals has impacted in some way or another because of the expansion of our outreach program and the commitment, really, we have to providing statewide leadership, not just local or regional. At the center of this work remains our vision, which is a right help, right time, and a right location. I'll start off with extended school year. This is our three-week program at School for the Blind, and then we have a one-week program at Hays. In each of these goal areas, we can identify improvements in some fairly dramatic. This slide shows some of the highlights of our 2019 ESY program. We'll serve 75 students this year. Thirty-three districts and cooperatives are sending students. We have two locations. To make this go, it takes 22 teachers, 29 pairs, and three practicum students to make these successful. Of these 54 staff, 25 of them are KSSB employees who work with us throughout the year. Each student receives specific instruction in the expanded core. District and parents are provided a complete report of the student's progress at the conclusion of the program. This slide shows our training day. We require a day-long training prior to each year's program. It covers health, safety, discipline, professional expectations, and logistical information. We do have tremendous support from statewide teachers and assistants, many of whom return year after year. Two of our teachers are in their 29th year of providing instruction in our ESY program. We offer three tracks to our ESY program. We have a summer, Kansas Summer Expanded Education. We call it KC. That's for children aged five to 15. The second track is the Kansas Prep, Preparatory Residential Enrichment Program. And then this is for 16 and 18-year-olds. And then we have a vocational track for 16 to 21-year-olds. Regardless of the track, all students receive instruction in Braille, orientation mobility, career and ed tech, and then assistive technology as well. This photo shows the popular SNAP circuits kit, which has been made accessible to those who are blind and visually impaired. Parts are labeled in Braille. There are written project instructions in Braille in large print, and this product helps students learn about circuits, current resistance, switches, motors, and other basic electronic concepts. It gives you a sense of some of the things that go on in our tech class. KSSB now has, will have two certified orientation mobility instructors on campus starting in the fall. Jenny Eichner on the right is our music therapist. She's completing her internship this summer and will receive her certification. Jenny's, again, on the right waving, so we're fortunate to have her join our orientation mobility team. Bike riding is often a new activity for young students who are blind, visually impaired. Three-wheeled bikes and tandems are most often used. This year, we had a totally blind, young elementary student who surprised our two veteran PE teachers by hopping on a two-wheeled bike and taking off around the track. So that was a new experience. Typically, for someone who's totally blind, balance is an issue, and riding a bike is not commonly seen. So we were surprised by that. Had a lengthy conversation with him following. Daily living skills instructions teach things like meal planning, shopping, financial management, obtaining housing and transportation, time management, managing medications. This photo, students are using an abacus to estimate monthly food expenses. While our programs look like a lot of fun, and they are, these are really critical skills for kids who are blind, visually impaired, that they're not going to pick up typically throughout the year. Our elementary class emphasizes a constructivist approach to learning, lots of tactile learning. This is a foam chalk sensory project that our elementary teacher was leading. We talked earlier about Voke and Career. Dr. Watson presented on that. Our prep students visited the world headquarters of Cerner last week, and visit with, and we visit with several metro businesses each week to learn about different jobs within those organizations, discuss the accessibility options for those who are blind and visually impaired. It's a start, not an end, but it's a way to expose our students to the world of business. This is a list of 33 districts who have sent students to our, either our KSSB or Hays program this year. Twenty-one are from metro area districts, but you'll note that there, most of these are from other areas of the state. We do have a couple of Missouri districts who send students to our program. This is a sending districts represented on a map of Kansas, and all our summer programs are stronger than ever and growing, so we're pleased about that. I want to turn to our field services team. I don't have a photo because I updated this later, but we have 13 field services, our outreach staff, who are part of our team. Some of the data I'm sharing is really only from January to May, so that's why the numbers don't look the same as previous years. But the bottom line is that we're growing and serving more students than ever before. We've added two team members to our field services. You've seen this map before. Molly Riordan and Pam Arbuthnot are both experienced TSVIs and comms who are joining our team. We're thrilled to invite them. They bring exceptional skills and experience. We continue to serve six regions of the state. The big picture takeaway here is that while shortages of teachers are real, KSSB continues to work hard to recruit, train, mentor, and connect new teachers in the state while filling gaps in direct services. So we're doing two things, both direct service, filling in those gaps, and leadership as well. This chart here kind of shows the approximate number of miles that four of our field service team drove last year and the furthest student away that they served by miles. So you can see, one of our field service reps has a student 252 miles away that they provide service to. From January to May, our staff conducted 227 different leadership events. These are things like workshops, presentations, and consultations. This slide shows the three most popular topics, cortical vision impairment, special ed process, that's things like, is this student eligible for services, questions about assessments, et cetera? And then the third one is orientation mobility. Of the 1,046 participants, educators, administrators, and families are really our main audience. And this graph shows kind of the relationship between those three. Our staff provide professional development in these areas, Braille transcription, learning media assessments, movement, adaptive PE, and others. Our staff also, as I said, do direct services. So from January to May, 229 students received direct instruction in these areas. That's assessments, IEPs. We also do direct service in orientation mobility, Braille instruction, things like that. And again, this slide shows what are those things that we're doing. Assessments are very popular. Low-vision clinics are very popular for our direct services. These are the districts that have received support for individual students in direct instruction. So if you put that on a map, you would see that it's pretty widely distributed. Our low-vision clinics now conducted regionally, have strong participation and attendance. And you can see on this map, if you looked very closely, where those are held. So we used to do these predominantly in the eastern part of the state. We're now conducting these across the state, and it's providing a better service to students. When we look at our programs and the number serves, there's no question that we're providing more students in all areas of the state, high-quality specialized instruction that's critical for their success. And these numbers show that. But the real question is, so what? So what difference is it making? We believe it's making a difference both for students and with our leadership. We believe it's making a difference for teachers and administrators and parents across the state. We're only beginning to kind of scratch the surface of how do we know this? But this data here, based on respondent surveys, says that people do agree that it's relevant, what we're sharing is relevant, useful, and it's high quality. We're going to dig deeper into this and say, exactly what does that mean and how do we do better? But we feel confident that the information we're sharing is well-received. I want to thank you for paying attention this morning. I moved rather quickly, of course. There were lots of numbers in there. I know Peggy Hill would be glad to share this with you. I had a photo, I'm not sure if I can pull the photo up, on an update that I had done, and a number of our students wanted to, oh, that's Dr. Watson's presentation, but our students wanted to say hello. We have a lot going on, but again, the point I want to make is that our summer school looks fun, and it is, but it's also critical learning for our students. It provides a service that local districts, I believe, find value in, and they take advantage of. And we work hard to report back to those districts what they're learning at our summer school experience. Lots, lots of other things going on. Two last things I will mention, since we talked about employment. We're preparing two initiatives next year. One is providing a Makerspace training in all six regions of the state, and the other is working with business to help students gain employment. We'll be doing a KCK Chambers After Hours event at our campus on August 21st. I welcome you to attend that. We'll have businesses there, and we'll also have some private organizations who are encouraging businesses to hire those who are disabled, not just individuals who are blind, visually impaired, although that's a part of it. When we talk about there aren't enough trained workers, they're missing an opportunity with those who are disabled. That'll be our message on August 21st. I'll stand now for questions if there are any.
John, thank you very much. A lot of good information here today. I would imagine the Board feels, as I do, we're really pleased to see the outreach and the summer programs and the trainings that you're doing in various parts of the state. I think that probably is, I mean, I made a comment to the Commissioner, I was really glad to see that, and I am sure a lot of folks are too. So appreciate your presentation. Janet Waugh has a question.
I have a question, I have a comment. Wow. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Please tell your staff how impressed I am with what's going on. This is so exciting, and I know this is maybe not the, this is a big step. I know we have a long, other steps to take, but this is absolutely amazing. And I would like to share with the Board one thing that I don't know that you're all aware of, but the School for the Blind and the School for the Deaf both have Facebook pages. And if you would like them, you will see some amazing things. And I've been watching this summer program, and they even have videos of dancing, which I just loved, by the way. That was so funny. But anyway, just priceless. And so please, thank you. Continue what you're doing.
Thank you for your support. I really speak for our staff, and this work isn't my work. It's really the work of the people who are there every day and doing remarkable things. But thank you for your support. We're grateful for it.
Well, thank you. Now I have to go on Facebook and like both of your pages. So Luann? Welcome. We're glad to have you here today.
She has a left-hand mic now. All right, thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners, Commissioner and Board of Ed. I believe that you would still stand up there and sign when board members ask questions.
Is this my screen?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Just making sure. Sorry.
I am so impressed with the School for the Blind data, and my presentation today will be a little different. We are focusing on our school profile and combining data that we'll provide at the next Today, I'll be talking about our extended school year. The theme this year is World Civilizations, Ancient and Modern. We have 95 students enrolled in extended school year, and our first day was yesterday. We had one full day of training for staff last Friday. This is the breakdown of the 95 students attending. Forty-one of those students are receiving services through Sound Start, which is our birth-to-three program, or early intervention. Twenty-two are receiving services through Outreach. Nineteen of those students are not KSD students, so we have a large increase as compared to last year. Seven students returned from other districts, and the rest of the students are new ESY students. Nineteen of those are living in the dorm. Eighteen are in the early childhood program, and so our challenge has become a rapid increase in the early childhood program. At the end of last year, we had 24 with eight moving to kindergarten, and this year we already have 18 in the ESY program. And so that's definitely expanding. Last year, we had around 82 or 84 students in the extended school year, and now we're at 95. And Madam Chair had asked that I share what is happening in our outreach program over the summer and what our projects are. And so we have many things going on that I would like to share with you as far as projects. We've had multiple events for families and students happening. We have ESY. We just completed an ASL, Family ASL Immersion Camp, and I'll be showing you a video of that towards the end of the presentation. We have... We had 72 participants, including deaf children, siblings, parents, and then extended family members, cousins, aunts, uncles, and grandparents participated in that program to surround that child so that they could learn language together. And it was a really cool program. I'll be showing you that video soon. We have Parents Support Group happening over the summer. Well, they'll be providing a summer splash program, and that is hosted by our KSD Parents' Support Group, and it'll be at the Spring Hill Aquatic Center, and it's open to all families, and it's free to the families. We have the entire pool to ourselves for the evening, and we're looking forward to that event in a couple weeks. And then we will be hosting the first-ever youth leadership camp, and we are inviting deaf and hard-of-hearing students throughout the entire state to attend, and we are partnering with the Kansas Association of the Deaf. This funding has come from the Olahtha Leadership Grant that we received two years in a row now, and we're using that funding plus KAD funding to... matching funding to be able to cover the cost for that camp for all deaf or hard-of-hearing students throughout the state that would attend. They have to be high school age, and again, that's free for the students. Meals are provided, lodging is provided at no charge. The only cost to the family would be transportation for the student to get them to KSD. We have a continuance of home visits throughout June to August for our birth-to-three program. Those services will continue through the summer. At this point, we have 110 babies, birth-to-three, that we're serving, and that number is growing very quickly. That's our summer offering that we have. As far as our summer projects, there are quite a few listed here, and many of these are related to professional development, internal restructuring of programming, and maintaining and supporting children throughout the state. The language assessment program that you're familiar with, that the statute was passed that we provide assessments for students' birth to eight throughout the state, we've reached Phase Two of that program, meaning that we are expanding from assessing children birth to three, we are moving into assessing children ages three to eight. And those are current students at the Kansas School for the Deaf because we're still in the pilot phase for that Phase Two. And so we are expanding and hiring more language assessment specialists who can do those assessments. We will be providing a three-day training over the summer in August. And so we are approaching our CESD accreditation in the fall. Their visit will be in November. We're completing our self-study at this point, and so once that document is completed, we turn that in to them, and then they come out for their visit. A lot of the work in CESD accreditation focuses on outreach because that's the area that we've been focusing on. There hasn't been as much of an emphasis on that five years ago, but now with accreditation and school viability, that is a larger emphasis. And there were recommendations from CESD that the school needed to focus on, and so we received a lot of feedback. We have 250 indicators and a lot of areas to focus on to strengthen the current programming. And so we definitely need help with that. We contacted Brad Schartz. I have his name spelled incorrectly on this slide, I apologize, from Green Bush, and he will be coming out to help us develop our school-wide strategic plan. And that would be a three- to five-year plan that he'll be working with us, and he actually starts with us over the summer to start to determine and sort out what the priorities are. And I believe there would be five targeted areas that we will focus on, and one of those for sure will be outreach, social-emotional development, academic achievement among those, retention, and so forth. And so a significant piece of that will be outreach. And then we also are providing deaf mentor training for new deaf mentors to be able to go out and provide support to families this summer. Engage for Change is the name of the transition program through the federal government, and that's through University of Texas. This is the second year for that, and it offers support for state agencies. And we are one of the schools, along with the Kansas Commission for the Deaf and Hard-of-Hearing Executive Director, the Department of Children and Family Services, and pre-eds are working together to look at systematic change for vocational rehabilitation and provide those service options for deaf and hard-of-hearing graduates, pre and post. And the goal then, of course, is that the employment rate is increased for people that are deaf or hard-of-hearing and that they continue to work in that transition area. We've had many IEPs this summer, which is not typical for us. Usually, it's pretty quiet, and we start IEPs in the fall, but we've had multiple IEPs this summer that Joan Macy has attended, nine to this point since school has been out, and there's more scheduled throughout the summer. Many of our staff will be attending presentations and conferences and professional development. Next, I wanted to talk about training for teachers of the deaf through TASN. Of course, you're aware that we have the TASN program that expands the number of teachers of the deaf in the state, and so we have quite a few that are graduating, becoming licensed in deaf education. And the state requires that they receive e-mentoring, and we are training a mentor teacher to be able to work with them, who... the students that just graduated from the program through KU. The mentees represent TODs from the Keystone Learning Center from Kansas City and Wichita area. Of those nine candidates that are in the program, they will be attending several conferences also over the summer that are funded through the TASN program. The plans that we have projected for the 1920 school year are the CESD accreditation visit. The date of that visit hasn't been determined. I did ask for a fall date in November, and I will keep you informed of when that is. Next is our Wellagent database, and the purpose of that database is to be able to keep track of outreach services and the language assessment program, and it will help us to keep track of students that might move from district to district, students that may transfer to KSD, students that would move, would participate due to outreach services. So the intent of the database is for those reasons, and it's funded through the Department of Health and Environment. We will be attending the eight KC regional meetings. Dr. Watson did emphasize the need to get out more into the state, and that's definitely part of the plan, to attend those meetings and be more in the school districts and the superintendent meetings. So I have set that goal for myself to complete that. We will also have statewide Sound Start training for early interventionists, training for Part C providers to be able to learn evidence-based practices and gain resources to work with families and children who are deaf and hard-of-hearing. There will be a minimum of two trainings that will take place in various areas of the state. We want to ensure that deaf and hard-of-hearing students are receiving those services on a regular basis. We will be having a statewide STEM camp for deaf and hard-of-hearing students, and we're starting to work on that now. We'll be working with the National Technical Institute for the Deaf. They have a VEX robotics program for youth, and that will be a club that we're starting at the school, and it will be an after-school club. Once we get that going, we will be establishing the first-ever STEM camp for deaf and hard-of-hearing students, and so that's part of the plan for next year. We are planning to present at the annual conference in October, the Department of Ed's annual conference. We have been invited to present, and we're scheduled... we're on the schedule. We'll be talking about teachers of the deaf and support for that group. We have four family events planned for the summer, and we are currently looking for locations to have those in four different parts of the state and trying to touch all corners of the state. We're in the planning stages of that. We need to find locations, and once we get that established, I will let you know that NASD, the National Association of Special Ed, is a national organization, and they just completed a publication entitled "Optimizing Outcomes for Students with Deaf/Hard-of-Hearing Educational Guidelines." And we are working with TASN, the School for the Deaf, and the Department of Ed to be able to collaborate and determine how we can provide a statewide workshop related to that information for special ed directors, administrators, and service providers about the new guidelines. The guidelines have 10 different principles of what the best practices are for educating deaf and hard-of-hearing students. All right. Now I'm going to show you a video from our ASL immersion camp that took place this last weekend, and I wanted to thank Dr. Watson and Peggy for your patience in allowing me to bring that today. I wanted to be able to show you that video. Lori Colwell, who's interpreting right now, is the coordinator of the camp and the program. There were 72 families... or, excuse me, 72 registrants and 19 families had attended, and so Lori will give some comments on the video and the slides as they're going by. This slide represents the student... the families learning the five parameters that make a sign in American Sign Language. The participants were involved in games and activities to reinforce their ASL lessons. The participants had to sign for their lunch. This is the 13-and-up class. In this activity, they're learning to develop eye contact for their receptive skills in Again, this is the five parameters that make up a sign in ASL, learning to internalize They're signing butterfly. We took the opportunity to showcase the blended learning program to the families while they were at the camp, and this is an example of Anthony Bishop, our instructor for blended learning, doing the story for them from the studio. This was a game that the kids participated in where they were rolling along on scooters, and if they ran into one of the barriers, they were out, and they had to come over to a staff person and show them a vocabulary word in sign language, and then they could join the game again. We did a bedtime story every evening in American Sign Language with the students and their This is the childcare area. They're enjoying a snack. We took a field trip so that families could understand better how to communicate in public with their child so that they have access. There's a movement called #YISign.
#YISign.
And we invited the families to submit a video to that page.
YISign.
And this gentleman is saying, "I sign..."
For my three boys.
"...because I have three sons. Two of them are twins."
I have twins.
"One of my twins..."
And one of them is hard-of-hearing. #YISign.
I'm from Kansas City.
We have three boys. First one's hearing.
We have three sons.
Middle one's hard-of-hearing.
Two of them are twins.
Other one's hearing.
And he's the hearing twin. The other one is hard-of-hearing.
Our middle son...
And we want to support the son that's hard-of-hearing. My name is Chase.
My name is Chase.
My last name is Carlton.
Carlton.
And this is how you sign my name.
This is my sign name. I'm from Carthage, Missouri. I don't have deaf or hard-of-hearing children.
I do not have...
But my two nephews are deaf.
I have two nephews that are deaf.
And I came to camp to learn how to communicate with my nephews.
I came to camp to learn how to communicate with my nephews. The ASL camp has been very successful, and in fact, today Lori and I, as we were traveling here, we were discussing the need for a second week of camp for those parents who are at more of an advanced level and are more comfortable in using ASL, and we want to raise the level of skill that they have. So we're now talking about expanding that program. We have many families that would like to return next year, and our goal is to increase the number to over 100, and I have no doubt that that program will grow. We see an obvious need for that. As I was watching the activities and the festivities, I was very pleased at how the camp was progressing, all of the staff that was there, and not only the staff, which we did hire recent graduates from the School for the Deaf to participate so they could develop those work-experience skills. And it was a good opportunity for the families to see deaf adults and have those people there as role models that are fluent in the language, and so that's part of that family engagement and having the families learning with their children. So the camp was really very impressive, and so that completes my presentation. And so that completes my presentation. I can stand for questions now.
Thank you, Luanne, and thanks to the interpreters also for helping us. Great presentation today. Obviously, a lot of things going on there. I think the board is probably very pleased. I know certainly that I am. We have one question or comment. Ann, Ma?
Thank you, yes. Very exciting stuff. I have a couple of questions about some of your camps. The ASL immersion, is that just once a year, or will that happen again this year?
At this point, it is once a year. We previously had tried a couple of weekend camps, but we weren't successful with registration there, and we had some cancellations. And so we do that based on feedback. There was an evaluation at the end of the camp, and so I'll be checking in with Lori when we get back to the office to learn what the families would like to do. And it would be nice to have it on a more frequent basis in different locations throughout the state. Perhaps a one-day opportunity for families that can't get to KSD. But the nice thing about having it there is that we have the lodging and the meals there. It's not completely free, but scholarships are available. And I do know that if it was more local, then it would be a lower cost to families to be able to participate, and we would like to see it be established in the state.
Okay. Do we have a date set yet for 2020 for that? Is it like typically right after school's out, or?
Lori's stating that she believes it'll be June 4th to 8th-
Okay.
-in 2020.
I'd just like to help promote that. And also, the Deaf Leadership Camp in August, is there a deadline for applications for that?
No, there is not a deadline. The camp is August 1st through the 3rd.
Okay. And I assume all the-
And we're still accepting applications for that.
Okay, I assume all the school districts know about this, even though I plan to let my superintendents know.
We did send out the information through the Department of Ed. We did an email blast twice before the end of the school year. The number of registrants is still very small at this point.
Mm-hmm.
And we would like to have more participants, for sure.
Okay.
I can send that information to Peggy, the flyer, and she can get it to all of you. And if you all could help us get the word out, that would be great.
That'd be great. I know Lawrence and Topeka have people that probably benefit from that particular, so thank you.
Okay, well, again, thank you very much. Lots of good information from both schools. We really appreciate the presentations today, and lots of good things going on. So, thank you. Board, we're going to take a short break, probably as soon as we can get back. I assume Bev is here.
Sure, sure, sure.
Okay, all right. So, a quick break, and then we'll be back, and we'll have JAG presentation. Okay, we're about there. Okay, all right, we're going to come back, and we've got Bev Mortimer here with us. Welcome, Bev, we're glad to have you. I know right now you're currently the Vice President of Programming for JAG, which, for those folks that don't know, is Jobs for America's Graduates, and this is working within the state of Kansas. So you're here to share some information with us, so welcome, we're glad to have you.
Thank you very much, and it is nice to be back here. It's been a few years, formerly, actually, 33 years in education. Teaching was part of that, and then administration, most recently in the Concordia District. So I retired from that business and knew I didn't retire for good, but I wanted to get back closer to students and interact with kids, and this was a perfect fit for me. So I'm glad to be here today to tell you, I'm going to give you a brief overview about what Jobs for America's Graduates Kansas is, and then move into the pilot that I was invited to share with you, that we have our feet in with students in foster care across the state of Kansas. So to start with, our mission, our job, that we take a lot of pride in, is that we partner with public schools in the state of Kansas to work in helping and ensuring that our kids graduate from high school, but there are students that face barriers to that graduation. But we don't stop there. Being the old track coach, you don't just stop at the finish line, you run through it. So we're also working to prepare them for what comes next. And that depends a lot on the student, whether that's college, or additional education, or military service, or a combination of those things. So that is our ultimate mission. Those are some pictures of our staff. We do, well, we started with 25 programs. We were under communities and schools in 2013, 14, and the program was implemented in 19 districts. I was at Concordia at that time, we were in that first group. And now, in 2018, 19, we have 81 programs in 38 districts with more than 3,800 students, plus three Success Academy, which is what I'm here to talk to you about today. Now, before I go further, I want to explain, I use the word "program" because that's what you understand. Dr. Watson said, "Mortimer, I don't need another program." And so I want to reassure you that as we go into school districts and we work in districts, we're immersed in, we look like part of the regular school day, and our people are treated like part of the regular day because we are a class on the master schedule. So we are very complimentary with the efforts of the state Department of Education and the board goals. I think we can check all of those off, that we also work in those areas. And since graduation is one of the things we focus on, what I can, you can see on the board, is that we have increased, we're kind of at a holding on the 98%. I think Dr. Watson said, "Come back when you get to 100." I'll be back, we're going to get there one of these days. But one of the key things I want to let you know is, we just had the class of 2019. I haven't put that number up on the board yet, because we will continue to follow up with those students for another year, no less than once a month. We'll be in contact with the kids if they didn't graduate. We're working on getting those credits recovered, or if a GED program is more appropriate, whatever it is, to get them that high school diploma as we continue to help them take their next steps. So we will not count 2019 until next year at this time. Our positive outcomes are measured in employment, the number or percent in post-secondary education or military, as I said before, or a combination of those. JAG is actually in 35 states, where one of those 35, we just finished our sixth year in the state of Kansas. JAG is a national organization, will be celebrating their 40th anniversary this year. So the model, there is a definite model, there are a set of competencies, and in the folder you have, it does not have my presentation, but it does have the list of the 37 core competencies. We actually have 87. If we work with students for multiple years, we'll get through more competencies. But we do all of the educational sound practices. We pre-test, we post-test, we monitor their progress on the competencies, and when our students graduate from high school, they will have mastered this set of competencies. The other things in the folder that I've given you, there's a list of our participating schools. Iowa's most recently last night at McPherson, Board of Education meeting, and their board approved to add the program for next year. Not on that list would also, unless they've updated it for me, we did add Colby for next year and Russell for next year, and then I believe a second program at Shawnee Mission North High School, because we have a middle school program there and one high school, we have a backup of kids. We have too many kids feeding in that we can't serve. So you have that. I won't talk a lot about it, but people want to know about programs. It says it on the slide, we are an accredited program, we are an evidence-based program. There is a Drexel study, there is a Forbes article for you to read. But I think most important towards the back, you might want to share, because I don't know that the folders, there may be a couple duplicates. I've included some of the newsletters from, throughout the year, from different programs around the state, and then a page that would have two student success stories, or testimonials from kids. And that's more what I'm about. We're here for the kids, and if you read those newsletters, you can see evidence that, of what we do in the model. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. We are mostly funded with TANF money. We know that's going to change. We're trying to diversify our funding to make sure we can continue programs. Our schools do pay a small affiliate fee at this point. So the program, competency-based, I mentioned that, you have a copy of the competencies. I'm going to talk a little bit more about the JAG Advantage, which our model has been enhanced. I'll just show you that in a minute. We do individual development plans, they're more extensive than the individual plans of study in our high schools, but we use those, that's a part of it. Because I talked about our students have barriers, we work with our kids on identifying and overcoming those barriers to success. So the individual development plan includes progress and action plans on those barriers, work history, career exploration, their plan of study through high school, and those types of things. Our students are required to do 10 hours of community service each year. We are a 12-month program in follow-up. I talked about the follow-up after graduation, but the other piece we do, whether it's middle school or high school, we stay in touch with the kids through the summer and meet with them occasionally, because sometimes that's where we lose them, in the summer. So we do some activities, meet with them, we might take them on field trips, might make a business visit, things like that. And we are a data-rich organization, I can tell you that. We have an electronic management system. We can pull up about anything you want to know that students are doing in different programs across the state. One recent report we're working on is our graduating class of 2019. We have to submit a scholarship report, and we think we're going to end up with about $5 million in scholarships with JAG-K seniors across the state of Kansas. And we don't want to take full credit, we are a partner with our schools, but we do help our kids, because that sometimes is one of the barriers to moving on to post-secondary. They need more help with the FAFSA, they need help maneuvering through. I'll tell you a quick story. One of our employees in marketing is Risa Flanders. Her husband is Dr. Blake Flanders, and she has been trying to help a young man get enrolled in school, who's got a full scholarship, and some of the barriers that are thrown out there for a young man who doesn't have parent support have been somewhat difficult. And I believe she has reported back to Dr. Flanders that we need to make some changes so our kids can do this. There are some benefits to that, and we may see some changes there. But the JAG Advantage, I want to talk about that because it does fit into a lot of the things that KSD is doing. A year ago, we started with infusing our programs, employer engagement, this is our model, draft model, and you will see a lot of similarities, and the words are KSD's words. Again, but I knew you would understand, and you would be able to correlate it with the KSD model. We start with kids learning about themselves and their own strengths. We want to do Level 1 awareness activities, which might be in the classroom, guest speakers, things like that. We move to Level 2, where it's more specific, smaller group. We might take a field trip, might take a group of kids to places they're interested. But our goal is to get all kids into Level 3 before they leave high school, which is some kind of work-based experience, actual work experience, because we know they're more likely to be employed if they have some experience. Now, where we can't get work-based experience, we do have the community service that is, that leads into that. Second thing, we deliver our competencies now. Our primary method is through project-based learning. We have a state trainer that's part of our organization, and we follow the Buck Institute gold standard for our project-based learning. And then all of that comes together when our employees, our career specialists can view the position and view what they do with students through the lenses of trauma-informed care. And we've really been training our staff on that, because it's about building those relationships and earning trust and those things so that you can move forward with students. We talk a lot about resiliency and how you bounce back from the things that knock you down in life. So that's what the JAG Advantage is, and our trifecta is when we can combine all of that into one PBL, that it's a project that's about employer engagement that also takes into account resiliency or trauma-informed care practices. So to move into why, I was really invited today. As a superintendent, principal, teacher, all of those years, I viewed students in foster care from a school perspective, that's what I saw. They came in, they enrolled, sometimes they stayed long-term, sometimes they were gone pretty quickly. Sometimes we didn't have a notification they were coming, sometimes we didn't get records. Things like that were happening. So there were some challenges with a single school system in addressing the needs or helping those kids. And then we have DCF, St. Francis, so they have challenges on placement, and then our model didn't really fit mobile students. Our model depends on the student staying put and building a relationship over time with one career specialist. So it was a couple of years ago, they called me and said, "What can we do? How can we serve the kids?" So I said, "Let me work on it." Well, if you look at those graduation rates, if we can say that the kids we work with who have barriers, who have risk factors, and we, our model can graduate them at 98% currently, and this is based on April 30th information from DCF, 44% of the kids in foster care will graduate from high school. I think I have, I don't have it on this slide. Here's some national statistics. It all says the same thing. We know that when they make transitions, they lose academic progress. We know that not very many of them make it to college, although tuition in Kansas is free if you're in foster care. But if they're not graduating from high school, then it's difficult to get there. And I think even more disheartening, I think it was a year ago, there was an article in a Kansas newspaper, a major newspaper, about the fact that they had to give scholarships to kids in foster care, and the quote I remember was, "Well, it's kind of an inconvenience, because if we have to give those scholarships, that means we have to take it away from our kids to do that, because we don't have it budgeted." I don't know who kids these are, they're our kids too. And so that was a little disheartening, but those of you who know me know that probably just added a little fuel to the fire to, how can we address the problem? Here's our Kansas statistics. As of April 30th, we had 7,610 children in out-of-home placements, and here are the graduation rates by the DCF regions. And I don't need to read those out loud, but that's a lot of kids that if things continue as they are, a lot of kids who are not going to graduate from high school. So then what happens after high school? You know, we all see that. Okay, so, phase one of the pilot that we put together was, we targeted Wichita, and that was because somebody from St. Francis called and said, "Bev, can you help us starting tomorrow or yesterday? We need help. We have these kids and we need help. Would you come meet with us?" So we did, we had some meetings, and they helped us identify. We limited to 10 kids because we weren't sure where it was going to go past that. And basically, started last January when kids came back. USC 259 was very, very supportive. They were willing to change some kids' master, on the master schedule, which they routinely didn't do. But we identified 10 kids who are behind in credits, off-track to graduate, and they already had a process in place. They had a class on the schedule during the day that was called a learning center, but it was only open for seniors at the time because they, of the need. We said, "Can we get our 10 kids in, it was credit recovery, can we get them in the class and then get them also in a regular JAG-K class? And we're going to hire a career specialist that's going to be the case manager for those 10 kids, examine records, look to see..." And we found lost credits, we found, we found a lot of things that we could do to help those kids. We found some, well, I'll get to that in a minute. But they agreed, and so we got these 10 kids in the pilot, and mostly people said, "Those kids aren't going to do online work, you have to be self-motivated." But that's not correct. These kids want to graduate from high school too. In the system, the way it's working, they were going to have to wait till they were seniors, and I do believe there used to be a fee, they had to pay a fee to be in the learning center. Well, their kids in foster care, and they have no advocate to get them in there, and that's the way it worked in that district. Some of the results and observations, we had two seniors in the pilot, both graduated, and I'm convinced they wouldn't have had we not intervened. One of them was based on a move right before they took their finals, and they weren't going to get to take their finals, therefore not graduate. One had some different reasons, but with that constant attention from our career specialist who stayed on them and didn't let things fall through the crack, that person, that one graduated too. We limited it to three high schools because we knew they were going to move, and we wanted to be able to serve them. But within two weeks, the three high schools became six, they had moved that much already. But all of the kids made progress towards graduation, and basically what they said is finally, not finally, they have other people, they said, "But you care about us, you're going to help us get there, so you bet we're going to do it." One student did move into a district without a JAG-K program, and that school, what we did, our person, our career specialist, called ahead and said- did, our person, our career specialist called ahead and said, you're going to get this student, I have all the records right here, here's the schedule they're working on. And that school district said, absolutely, thank you, they can start right now. And how do we get a JAG K program was their second question. But there wasn't any lag in moving those records and getting things set up, because there was a person that they could talk to and ask questions. But our challenges, and I know things have gotten better since I served as a superintendent, but those updated records, sometimes kids transition so much, a school doesn't have time to catch up. We found some lost credits in transition. We also found, well, there, there are online courses and computers and we need those. And one of the problems is, well, one of the benefits of working in USD 259, they said we could use their system. And when we had kids enrolled in their online course, we said, under the condition that if they leave, you have to let them finish their course on your system because that's the problem. And the whole idea was to make sure they were getting their core credits. I don't think I've ever seen anybody fail to graduate because they lacked electives, it's those core credits. And there is a law that says you have to have the 21 required credits, which I might as well mention right now, that's been a challenge. We still run into, but that's not our local graduation requirement. And again, we've had to be the advocate to say, here's the regulation. Well, we don't have any evidence they're in foster care. Here's the court journal, you know, and, and do those things. And so that's been a challenge. Transportation is one of the biggest challenges. A student may stay in Wichita, but they may be placed across town and they don't have a way to get to and from school. The kids say themselves they lose extracurricular activities. One said, I would like to be in band, but I've moved so many times that they don't want me in band because I've fallen behind. That mobility, that change of placement, it's also a challenge when you move districts and you have different school policies and district policies and different online courses. And I'll get to more about that in a second. So, that was from January through the end of the semester last year. And we saw enough success that we said, all right, let's try to go bigger with it. And so, we, we went to Phase 2, starting with this school year. I want to take a minute to let you see, these are, this is information we have available in our electronic database, but it'll give you a, kind of a picture of the kids that we're working with right now in our Phase 2 of our Success Academy pilot. The top of barriers identified, 75% of the kids have low academics, no work experience, obviously, jobs, that's part of what we do. A number of, more than half of them have excessive absences. And 42% needed transportation, 42% have been expelled, suspended, or on academic probation, which is just a part of our regular model. If we have kids that get suspended, our, our saying is, once a JAG student, you're always a JAG student, our specialists will continue to touch base with those kids even if they're out of school. And actually, they have to keep touching base until they can't find them anymore. And even then, we expect them to try to keep finding them. Education goals of these kids that we work with, they told us, they do want to earn their high school diploma. But if you're required to have four years of English and you start to fall behind and you're a sophomore or junior and you're already behind, you lose hope that you're never going to get to that high school diploma, then other things start to go with it. 24% want to go right into work. Now, some of these are duplicated, so if you start adding, you'll see they don't quite get to 100 or they go over. 16% do want to go to a, a two-year college or education certification training. That is one of the things we've found with a lot of the students we work with. If we can talk to them about certifications or earning certifications or some experience when they're in high school, they start to gain that confidence that they can keep going. That is not the end. But some of them don't have the confidence or support to all, you know, right now say, I'm, I'm going to go, I'm going to go get a four-year college degree. They need to be shown that they can get there and the steps into it. Because we do have 34% that do want to go to college. We have 13% that do want to go into military service. And then, we do have 7% that don't know. And the pilot group last year, I know, in talking to them, they said, I don't know, I can't even think about next week, and you want me to think about what I want to do when I get finished with high school. The student profiles, the group we're working with this year, 1.91 GPA to start the year, average of 19 absences per student. 75% of the students we're working with were in the bottom 25% of their class academically. And 13, only 13% were employed, average of 19 hours a week. Their salary was $8.45 an hour, on average, of the kids who were employed. So, back to the real pilot, we expanded to Kansas City, Topeka. First thing to do was to develop relationships with KBC, we had a different provider, and then the Kansas City and Topeka school districts. We hired a specialist to work in each of those regions. Some of our early challenges were identifying school location of the kids. We would get schools who would say, I don't know which kids exactly are in foster care right at this minute, right this minute. We would get providers who would say, we don't know which schools they're in. And so, I, I really think, and I'll say it again, we get to a point where I think we serve a purpose here that we can help schools, we can help the providers bridge that gap. Because you hear a lot about placement, you hear a lot about, a lot of other things. I think education right now, the educational needs or the focus on education is, is not on the front burner here. But providing that online instruction in the core areas, working in different districts, it's not consistent. And you'll see at the end, I'll say it again, if we had one consistent system that we could put the kids in and monitor on those online, I think we could manage that. But also implementing our model for our kids not in the JAG K schools. How do we get them the competencies if they're in a school without JAG K? How do we get those employability skills to them? We're working on that. And again, the online courses and the computers, although we worked with Dale Dennis, he said there is a way to pay for the online piece through virtual school, you know, through the formula. So we have been working with KSDE on this also, right? Dr. Watson's probably seen me more times than he wanted to. But in the future, near future, that's the summer, we're working with DCF and St. Francis to establish a, a new pilot in the West Region where that graduation rate was 26%. That's going to be tough because, but we're going to test the model. It, it's a larger region across the state of Kansas, more rural regions, it's been easier, the kids have been closer together in the three pilots we've done so far. And I'm going to put this all up. We're working and finalizing our best practices, which is the delivery of the competencies that we want them to get, and then how we can deliver consistent core classes even if the kids move around. And then the JAG advantage, you know, the employer engagement, the trauma-informed care, the resiliency. We also need to secure funding, make sure it's stable, and I'll back up. Part of our competencies, there'll be a little bit of a shift with kids in Success Academy and more focus on what happens after school. A lot of them are headed to independent living, and we need to make sure that we have them prepared for that, which isn't as much in our competencies. And that 12-month follow-up, especially with our Success Academy kids, we may need to go to the 24 months. But we also need to make sure moving forward, we can secure funding to continue. We'd like to go with the statewide expansion. And then for me, are we in a position that we could provide some statewide educational case management for students in foster care, starting in middle school? We'd really like to start there because we know we can make a bigger difference if we can get them sooner. With that, I'm sorry, I hurried through. I will tell you, in the three years that I've been with JAG K, we've had three governors and three DCF secretaries. So this has been a continuous, you know, inform and get input and find out where we stand. And, and I believe that all of them have been supportive of the vision or the efforts that we're trying to make here. And so today, I wanted to just share with you a little bit about the Success Academy and our efforts with students in foster care as well as our regular program.
Well, thank you, Bev, this is very interesting. We've got, it looks like a couple of questions, Anne, Ma.
Thank you. Great presentation, it's really good to have the background. So what percent of your students are in foster care in JAG?
Currently, there aren't, I, I, I don't know that, it's a low percent. It may be different, in different areas. And part of that is because we're limited to a caseload in a program in a school, you know, say 50 students. And so when they select the students to be in the JAG K program, they'll work with the counselors, they'll work with teachers and staff. And I, I'm going to guess here that sometimes students in foster care, if they're, it's predictable that they're going to move, they may not put them in the class, but we do serve them. But it's hard then because then they leave and we start over again. I, I can get that.
I just wondered how many, how many you serve. My only other question was about the funding. I understand funding got cut from this year to next year, is that right? Because I kept calling the Secretary of DCF going, we've got several education programs, you fund out of TANF and it's all up to you, so.
Right.
And I hadn't heard yet. So how did your funding wind up?
We, we know that we're, we have funding for next year, although a little bit it changed. I don't know that our total dollar amount was cut, but they defined or maybe put some restrictions. For example, we have students, a couple of the things we do, kids go to state competitions with some of these basic skills, public speaking, employability, math skills, they present their projects. Some of those kids then qualify to go to the National Leadership Conference in Washington, DC. That's one of the things that they said is not appropriate to spend TANF money on, out-of-state travel. So we're going to have to fund that differently. But in exchange for that, we're able to start this West Region pilot with Success Academy. So our overall dollars aren't cut for next year, that I'm aware of at this point, but our out-of-state travel dollars like that, they've said, we, we don't want, we don't believe TANF is an acceptable use of that. But we also know that in October, they will, we'll have to submit an RFP and then see how we're funded past. It'll be competitive.
So what percent of your total funding is from the state, from TANF?
From TANF, I think that we are still around 90%.
Wow, because I'd heard there was a chance, like it was all going to go away, so.
Well.
What do we have to do to convince the governor it's a good program?
You know, what I, I, I don't believe it will, I don't think you can argue the results that we get with the kids.
Yeah, they look good.
And I think, what we'll figure out, wherever we know, you know, we land and what we have for funding, that's why we're working really hard, we started two years ago actually, to try to figure out how we could fund, because we didn't want all of our money in one, one pot with, with one source.
And your total funding is about, I forget how many million?
I believe we are just over 5 million.
That's what I was thinking too. Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Ben Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. JAG K actually came up in a conversation I had last night. I was at the Early Childhood Community Meeting in Emporia last night, and Superintendent is on the JAG K board, and I got to talk with, with Kevin, a little bit about JAG K as well as somebody from DCF. We were all in, in a group and the wonderful work that is going on there, I got to see it on a visit that I did in Emporia as well. I stopped in the JAG, JAG K classroom, and I know it's doing wonderful work in Hutchinson because that's close by to where I live and, and in Newton. And we talk about those challenges that you have in regards to just trying to deliver this program. And one of the things that came up yesterday, and it's something that came up, and it was regardless of age, and it's a struggle with kids in foster care, is, is the wraparound, the paperwork that follows the kid. We have kids in foster care that can't get enrolled in school because they can't get the, they can't get their immunization records. And so it's, it's an issue all the way across the board. And so, as we started to talk about the early childhood, some of the stuff that we're talking about also affects our secondary students as well in regards to the services and getting that paperwork through so we're not, we don't lose kids, we're losing kids because of, of paperwork. And that, that upsets me greatly in our system. And I have several friends who are foster parents and they have expressed to me the same issues that they have going on there. And so, if you can help, when we have those conversations, streamlining this to where we don't lose kids in our, in our system, that they can go from school to school through the foster care system, help us shed ideas on that, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. I will say, the idea about the core classes being online, we didn't pull them out of classes where they were being successful. If they were already behind math, they were already behind English, we got them in those first to recover those credits to move on. We have some people in our organization who are foster parents and they worked with us on this and said, you know, I've had kids sitting at my kitchen table for two weeks waiting to get in school, but if they had the computer and I could work with them on their English or their math, they could continue and not have that interruption, that would help tremendously. And the idea about the records, with the high school kids we work with, we're also teaching them to advocate for themselves. How can you do it? What do you need? How do you get your driver's license? How do you get a city bus pass to get yourself to work and home again? So, those are some of the competencies we work with the high school kids, that independent living piece.
Well, Bev, thank you very much. I think it's been informative for the board. Get some additional information. I think we're all aware of JAG, but a little more detail, it was helpful. And I wish you well as you continue. It'll be interesting to see how these pilots continue to go.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Board will break for lunch. There are a few of us, myself and Janet and Jean, we're going to meet with Scott Gordon. And so we're meeting in Commissioner's Conference Room, so grab something to eat and then we'll, we'll be back at 1:30. Thank you. Good afternoon. I'd like to start the afternoon State Board of Education meeting. And this is an exciting time of our meeting. We're always excited to get to recognize staff members from throughout the state. And today, we've got a really special presentation and we're going to turn it over to Mr. Dennis, so welcome.
Thank you. I thought I, for a little, I knew she wasn't introducing me, Brother Porter, but I wasn't sure who it was. But anyway, it is good to be here. And you, you are kind of in luck today, I think. You're going to get to hear three outstanding superintendents, or principals, excuse me, they'll scold me for saying that, outstanding principals that were chosen by their peer group to be leaders of the state for this year. And they also are going to review with you all the things they're doing to help reach the board's outcomes and help each student be successful. And we'll start first with the Elementary Principal of the Year, which was, he'll be considered the 2019 National Distinguished Principal of the Year by the Kansas Association of Elementary School Principal, Eric Sacco, from Clifton-Clyde, 224. Am I right?
You're right, yes.
Yes, sir.
Welcome. We're, we're glad to have you.
Thank you.
All right, first of all, I'd just like to thank you all for the opportunity to come here today and present to you. As mentioned, my name is Eric Sacco and I'm the proud principal of Clifton-Clyde Grade School and Clifton-Clyde Middle School in Clifton, Kansas, and part of USD 224. It's an honor to be recognized as the KAE SP Nationally Distinguished Principal Award, but none of that's possible without a great staff, a great set of students, a supportive superintendent, a supportive board, and more importantly, a supportive family. I'm proud of many of the things that we are doing at Clifton-Clyde Grade School and Middle School, or things that we are planning on doing in the future. So I'd like to share a few of those with you today. For example, kindergarten readiness is a main focus of the state. And at USD 224, we are very blessed to have a free four-year-old preschool for all four-year-olds within our district, as well as a three-year-old identified preschool. Now, I've been at Clifton-Clyde for eight years and the free preschool has been in place long before I got there. So this wasn't something that was created as part of a board goal, but it's something that we have done for a long time. One of the things that we wanted to do as a district is build a better relationship with the families in our district. So one thing that we created that goes along with our preschool is something that we called Early Eagle Storytime. And our preschool runs Monday through Thursday. And so on Fridays every other week, our preschool teacher gets out into the community and goes out to our local libraries. We have a library in Clifton as well as a library in Clyde. So on Friday, she goes out for an hour and does an Early Eagle Storytime where we invite children from birth to preschool age to come in for an hour-long story, as well as a lesson that goes along with the story that is being read. And what we've found as benefits of this, it has strengthened the, the trust between families and our school. It has built that early relationship with families coming into our preschool. The incoming students are allowed to get to know our preschool. The incoming students are allowed to get to know our preschool teacher a lot better. And it also has helped identify some of our incoming three-year-olds that need that extra support, extra help, and has gotten them qualified to get into our preschool at an early age. Another thing that I'd like to highlight is the state goal of social emotional growth. And at Clifton-Clyde, we adopted the Second Step Program last school year. And so this was implemented as our social emotional curriculum for our kindergarten through eighth grade students. And next year, I'm excited that the program has been also purchased for our preschool. So next year, we will have a social emotional curriculum for students all the way from preschool up into our eighth grade. And then the last thing is the state goal that closely relates to individual plans of study that focus on career interest. And this is something new that we're implementing next year at our middle school. And we have created elective block for our seventh and eighth grade students. That goes Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. And the way that we created this was, we went to the teachers and asked them to create an elective that aligns with their curriculum as well as a passion of theirs. And so our teachers came up with a creative writing, a STEM robotics encoding, a 3D art design, an intro to weights and conditioning, as well as a band and vocal music for our seventh and eighth graders to choose from. And I said this was Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. On Wednesday, we're going to use this time as an advisory for our sixth through eighth grade, where we're going to focus on this upcoming year, student-led conferences, grade tracking, again, our Second Step, team building, and more culture building throughout our middle school. And as I mentioned before, none of this is possible without having great kids and great staff that do great things. So thank you all very much for the opportunity to come today.
Laura Jo Atherley is Principal of Jardine STEM and Career Exploration Academy in Wichita. And her peers chose her to be the Kansas Middle School Principal of the Year. That's pretty special, when your peers do that for you. And that's, and so we're honored that she's here today. And we'll turn it over to you and let you share all the great things you're doing to meet the board's outcomes and help each student walk on water.
Well, I am Laura Jo Atherley and I am the Principal of Jardine STEM and Career Exploration Academy. I have been fortunate to be there for about eight years and getting ready to start my ninth, and it has been quite a journey. It is a place that I love. It is definitely, not only my job, it is my vocation. But as my colleague here said, it is certainly a team effort. And our school is very fortunate that we have a wonderful team of people. And I just want to show you a little bit about them. Our demographics, we definitely are a school with some challenges. And for those of you that have monitored report cards over the years, you know that Jardine is one that has received some intensive, comprehensive support over the years. And I'm proud to say that we will not be receiving any support next year. So we have made lots of gains. We're certainly got, still got some room to grow. We definitely still have some big challenges, but we know that we are instructionally doing the right things for kids. We are predominantly free and reduced lunch. We are predominantly Hispanic. However, with our new Magnet theme that we brought in about five years ago, we have found that our population has grown and we are a neighborhood school that also brings in about 42% of our population in Magnet. Our theme is STEM and Career Exploration, and we have great students. We have students that are working collaboratively. We have students that are working on social and emotional growth, trying to get kids to be cognizant of the good things that are happening in their world during our advisement time, our JAG time. We have kids focusing on powerful words, using their avid strategies. We have been very blessed by our community that they have brought in speakers like Shasta Wayes, who was a first generation, she was a newcomer student to our country. And she also was the first female pilot that flew all the way around the world in a single-engine plane. And she spent some time with some of our newcomer girls to really get them interested in STEM. And one of our community partners in the aviation industry brought her in for us. Vex Robotics is a huge thing for us. You know, some schools really thrive on basketball. For us, it is Vex Robotics. We love to compete and our kids have really taken a shine to this. And we were able to attend the National Robotics Tournament for the first time this year. We are working to get kids college and career ready, not only in the classroom, but we're getting them onto college campuses so that they can see that when they sit in a desk, whether it be at Pittsburgh State, or K-State, or Cali County, that a desk is a desk is a desk, and that they can be there. We had students, for the first time, we had four students recognized in the Scholastic Art Competition this year. So we were very pleased with that. I have great staff and great teachers who are willing to go the extra mile and write grants and dress up in funny costumes and do whatever they can to engage our kids. We had a finalist for the Kansas Teacher of the Year this year, which made us so proud. We're working so that our kids will become great leaders, whether it be serving as pages in the state, or our Boys Base Club, which is Better Academics and Social Excellence Group that we're targeting for our minority males. Leadership, our avid kids. We were fortunate this year, for the second year in a row, to be awarded the Magnet Schools of America Site of Distinction. That was a real point of pride for our team. We had a student place third in the art contest for the Magnet Schools of America. And we're working to become great citizens. And part of that means embracing our community. The community we're in is economically challenged. It was never really meant to be a permanent part of Wichita. It's called Plainview. And we've worked really hard to engage our community. And there's just some pictures of some different events. We've worked with our elementary school to create kind of a K-8 feel in our neighborhood. This was a community movie night where we had members of the community come in and our kids served popcorn and snow cones and showed the movie Coco. We have a group that has started this year called LEAD. It's an elective class. It's a language arts enrichment. And this really goes with our Magnet theme, that we are having different careers and jobs come in, kind of in like hubs, like healthcare, or retail, or different kinds of businesses. They're coming in and they are working with our students, giving them some information and meeting with them in small groups. In turn, the challenge is to our LEAD kids to not only receive that information, but then we've charged them with going out in the community and learning to lead. They have done projects for a local animal rescue. They've read with Calvin Elementary. They've worked at the Kansas Food Bank. They received a grant and took some of the Calvin kids down to the Great Plains Nature Center. So those are some ways that we're trying to teach our kids to lead. This next group of slides is a project that we did called Generation Steam. And if you have a chance to get on the Arts Partners website, I'd love for you to see the video. We brought in artists and engineers from Wichita State and they worked with one of our sixth grade classes, sixth grade science classes, and they studied solar energy. And they went to Plainview Park, which isn't the most beautiful park in Wichita, sorry. But they designed what they thought would be fun things to put in the park that could be powered with alternative energy. And our kids chose solar. They then created mockups and we had a community members, our city councilman, WSU professors, different people come in and vote for the projects that they thought were the very best. Kids then presented those to the park board in Wichita, the city building, which was a very big deal. We're hoping that the city commission will maybe consider some of our ideas. You might see them actually implemented in our parks. We participate in Circle of Friends, Girls on the Run. One big event this year was Love Your Community, helping bring pride to our community. We had a parade and speakers and community fair. And again, our kids were serving. Probably the biggest project that we had this year that I think goes along with that college and career focus that you guys have looked at is our Generation Steam. And we, this actually came from a community partnership from, I think it was called Kansas 2020. It's called Dream Keepers. And basically, we were approached by this group and we were able to bring this into our seventh grade, focusing on the STEM and career piece. We had four industries come out and each industry took a day and took our kids through some workshops. We had Wildcat Construction and some other construction partners. We had Westar Energy. We had Spirit Aero Systems. And then Davis Moore Auto Systems came out and took kids through hands-on activities. Here you can see Wildcat Construction actually brought out equipment that kids could stand on and be on. They built excavating machines to teach kids that really construction is more than just hammers and nails. They were able to build some designs. Davis Moore brought out one of their new modern cars that kids got to be in. They got to learn to change oil and had to figure out all of the things about filters and oil. They learned how to put the window tinting on. So I'm sure everybody in Plainview is going to have window tinting this summer. Spirit Aero Systems had 40 volunteers come out and kids worked in pods collaboratively and went through the actual jobs, job types that Spirit Aero Systems would. Kids had a fabulous time. And then this was Westar. The kids loved, especially my girls loved, that they were able to see this lady who is, I can't remember, I'm sorry, I'm drawing a blank on her job title, but being able to see a woman in the industry, they thought was just so, so challenging and so, so inspiring. Then kids, as a result of this project, had to create PowerPoints and they actually interviewed their parents for jobs. So parents came in on a family night and then they had six different jobs that they had to apply for. Some of the parents didn't get hired. So anyway, we have got some great things happening at Jardine. It's hard to talk about it in 10 minutes, but I'd love to have you out if you ever want to come see great things that are happening. Thank you.
The Kansas High School Principal of the Year, chosen by the Secondary School Principal Association, is Honorable Greg Rassenhagen from Cheney High School. Greg?
Again, thank you for allowing us this opportunity to come and just share a few things. I'm really proud of Cheney High School and our community. It's a community I grew up in, haven't always been there, but have been there the last eight years as the high school principal. So I think one thing that I would just kind of hang our hat on, something that we do extremely well, and I'm not just talking about our school, our school district, but our, our community, is establishing relationships with our kids. I chuckle, I was out here right before, or right after lunch, and I got a phone call and it came from one of our Chamber of Commerce members. They meet second Tuesday of every month at lunch at the Bowling Alley slash DiMario's Pizza Place and wondered where I was. They always look forward to hearing school news and a, and a brief school report. And I don't know that they were really after me as much as they were, where are your kids? Because they invite four students to come out, which our staff select as students spotlight kids on a monthly basis. So they were wondering where I was, but they were really wondering where our students were today. But our community is extremely supportive. They do a great job of reaching out for our students and providing opportunities for them. I'm going to hit on the five different areas. As was stated before, seven or eight minutes doesn't give a lot of time to go into great detail. I'm going to maybe list some things. I'm going to maybe focus on some things that we do that might be a little bit unique. But again, I don't know what all other schools are doing either, but these are some things that happen on a weekly basis at Cheney High School. Again, as I mentioned, relationships are our number one goal. Ways we address the social emotional parts, I know at the elementary school, and I'll touch on a few elementary things, they have what they call Fab Families. We don't have a fancy name at the high school for that, but we have the same seminar groupings to where teachers follow a group of students all four years of high school. Ends up being about 14 students each, really get to know those, those students. We do less, with, in those seminar groupings and all, we do lessons and activities that are mapped to the SEL competencies, the employment skills and the Kansas Can Vision. We formed an SEL and IPS team, Individual Plan of Study and Social Emotional Team. We've had that going for about two years now. They're the ones that come up with the lessons and the activities that all the staff members carry out. We've, at the lower levels, we've adopted the Zones of Regulation reviews. We continue to review the Communities That Care survey results and see what areas need to be addressed. And maybe the most unique, and I know other people do these too, we're not the only ones, but, but the porch visits. And at the beginning of every year, anybody new to the building, all incoming ninth graders, we're a 912 building, all incoming ninth graders and any new students, we divide up. We include the classified and certified staff and we go do porch visits to those new students coming in. Had some staff members initially that were like, a little uneasy with that, but it ended up probably being the most rewarding thing that we've done the last, the last couple of years. I'll touch on kindergarten readiness, doesn't maybe apply as much to me, but we provide four-year-old public preschool. We've applied for, for grants for the four-year-old at-risk program to serve students down through three, the three to five-year-old age group. We at one time had Parents as Teachers Program. I know like some have had as well. And we're looking again at, at a way to add that back. Been eight to 10 years probably since we've had that, really looking to, to utilize some of the things that that program provided, which at that time I wasn't at Cheney, but I know there were some positives with that. Skip on to individual plans of study. We, five years ago, I believe, hired a full-time college and career director. We've increased our pathways from five in 2014 to 20 this up and coming year. One thing that's, I think, really allowed us to, and probably the thing that I'm most proud of, is we changed our schedule three years ago. We run a four-by-four block schedule to a five-by-five block schedule. It was my thinking that we needed to provide more electives. We're a combined middle school, high school building. We share some staff members. We have our own middle school principal. And I know they were suffering from having kids to really be forced into electives they weren't interested in. And we've been able to, going to the five-by-five, we surveyed students on what courses, what areas that, that we didn't provide for them. We asked staff members, and this, this went on for about a year and a half, if there was something they could teach that we just can't fit on their schedule and all, what might that be? What are you able to teach? What are you certified to teach? We added over 20 courses because every staff member took on another teaching elective and all. So we added over 20 elective opportunities for, mostly at the high school level, but some at the, at the middle school level as well. That added, that allowed us to add an FFA program back that we had dropped back in the seventies. We have a full culinary program. We added automotive. We just added a whole lot of areas in every, or at least one in every content area for our roughly 25 staff members. And I think the reason why I'm really proud of that is it's something, we took our time. We had, we had teachers ready to jump off and, and do it right off the bat. And we had a lot of reservations. So we feel like we really did our homework, got the buy-in that we needed. And we, you know, the, the students are the benefactors for that because there's so much more provided for them. We use the, work-based learning is another thing, another reason why we went to that five-by-five schedule too. And we don't have a lot of business in Cheney, but for, to be 20, 25 miles from Wichita, we have our share. And for a small town, we really have more than, than most our size. But we're close enough to the Goddards, the Wichitas, and have enough business within town to where we have over 50% of our students that are in work-based learning or internship programs. And that's really just kind of been the last two years that we've had that. Some of them for a semester, some of them for a full year, some of them do something different for a semester as opposed to second semester. So really proud of, of that area. With our college and career person, we also have onsite summer, both remedial and credit recovery, and also during the school year. I know I just looked at, we don't have our schedule really set for this year because we had some, a last-minute staffing. we had some, a last-minute staffing change, but I know we have over 100, I'll refer to them as units, of online credits that our 58 seniors are taking for this year. So, we feel like we're really individualizing it for those ones that, we offer a lot of electives, but if they can't find the elective or find that area, you know, maybe a CNA, something like that, we're able to provide that for them. Being one-to-one with MacBooks helps that ability as well. Jumping back to the onsite summer school for remediation, credit recovery, one thing we've done for, we're starting the Student Risk Screening Scale, SRSS Scale. I'm not even that familiar with it yet, but we're going to be implementing that to kind of screen some of our kids who are, who we know are at risk. We've adapted to a, we have a two-year introductory high school math program. We have an integrated math program, so like the geometry is kind of intertwined with everything else. But we've gone to a, we have, with block scheduling, they have, say, math class every other day. We have some kids who we double-block and give it to them every day. We have another track where we just move at a slower pace for those kids who need to move at a slower pace and 77 minutes in a setting is too much. So, we have several tracks in the area of math that we've put in to assist with them meeting their math requirements. And post-secondary completion and attendance, again, with all of the pathways, we have OSHA certification, NCCER certification, that's in the construction field, CNA, CMA, EMT, home health care, that's another pathway we added, was athletic training. So, we have some real interest now that we once didn't really have in the area of home health and just healthcare period. We know there's a need and we didn't really show a great interest until we started being able to introduce some of those areas. And one thing we try to do is get all of our kids, and I'm amazed, even being 24 miles from a college campus at Wichita State or something, how many kids just have never stepped foot on a college campus or have known nothing about WSU Tech, which is a gem in our local, you know, in a nearby community and all? So, one thing the last several years, and well, eight now since I've been principal, that we've taken those kids, we call it a road trip, and we board the bus and I drive one of the buses and we get every kid on a four-year college campus at WSU, kind of a mini tour. We stop at either Friends University or Newman University and at WSU Tech in a day's time. So, again, give those kids some exposure to those different opportunities that they have. I'd close with, again, that relationships, we know in a small town or where it's at, what allows us to do any of this. And, you know, the porch visits, I think is the start of something pretty special for kids to be a part of. And our staff has bought in. If I said we didn't have time for the porch visits at the back-to-year professional development days, they would tell me to find time because it's something we need to do. We know we need to connect with those kids early and often, and by tracking those kids for four years with the same staff member, we're able to do that. I guess I'd also be pleased to say that in five years, I haven't had any staff turnover at Cheney High School, and that's really allowed, I mean, because we've gone through that. What do we do when that person leaves and these kids really connect with that person? And we haven't had to do that in five years. And we had one this year, so the fifth year is when we had to make a couple of changes. So, but pleased with that. Again, it's a work in progress, we know. We're not where we want to be. We haven't connected 100% and our Communities That Care Survey tells us that. But we look at that data and that's our goal, to make sure that we do connect with everybody. So, thank you.
The three, would the three of you come up? They may have some questions for you that they'd like to ask.
Board members, questions? Dina, you got your hand up? Okay. Board members?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have a question.
Okay, Steve?
As we work to bolster the professionalism of teachers, should our mindset be closer to, teachers want to work toward being professionals like doctors, lawyers, very specialized training and able to rather negotiate their salaries? Or more toward the other end, we need to be more egalitarian, we need to treat all teachers the same, we're going to embrace the traditional salary chart? And, you know, it's time and grade and whether or not you have an advanced degree in education. So, as, if you can kind of speculate on where we might want to go in terms of professionalism, to bolster professionalism for the ranks of our teachers, which way do you think we should follow? What do you think we should do to do that, to bolster the professionalism of our instructors?
I guess I would comment, and I'm not sure if I'm going to hit on the real salary piece of that and all, that I think one thing that we've done, we need to continue to do is provide them professional development opportunities so that they do receive that credit as a true professional in their field. Something locally we've done is individualize our professional development to where they come up with a plan and one size doesn't fit all in a professional development setting. So, once in the fall semester, once in the spring semester, we've had them develop an application of sorts and that's reviewed by all of the principals and all, so they can really individualize what they want to get out of professional development. So, I think that's a big part where it's at, that we need to look for ways to, not everyone has the same need, we know that, so look for ways to give them what they need. And I think they're looked at as being more professional if we provide that.
Janet Wall?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Congratulations. It's so exciting to hear all of you and to, for you, each of you to be such, so outstanding in your field. My comment is, first of all, thank you. It appears to me that you're all kind of following our vision and this is exciting, you know, with, you know, career, personalized learning and all the other things that you're doing. And we're excited about our new vision and everything we have to offer. And I guess, are you, I think one thing we need to know, have we created more problems or is this creating any challenges for you? Or do you think it's more beneficial? Because almost every time we have a board meeting, I'll have somebody ask me in education, say, "Okay, Janet, what more have you added to our plate?" And do you feel like we're doing that? Or do you feel like we're heading in the right direction? I just want to hear your comments from in the field about the vision.
I would say, you know, looking at, looking back at last year, we were going through the KISA process and reevaluating what we're doing within our district, I think it's been eye-opening. It's let us take a step back and look at what we're actually doing that align with the goals of the board. You know, I think we do, we do a lot more than we know we do. And so, going through that process, being able to step back, get a group together, talk about what we're doing, you know, not only as a district or a building, but as individual teachers, it's shown us that we're more aligned with the goals than we thought we were.
What we do is tough, period. And there's always going to be a lot of things that we have to balance. I think what I appreciate about the direction that the board is going, is leading us to, for a long time, we talked about rigor, relevance, and relationships. And I think that the direction that you are sending us really helps kids understand the relevance of what they're learning. You know, when we were able to bring in spirit and we were able to bring in these community organizations, kids can get their hands and they can see their future. And they can say, you know, "I like math, but I like working with my hands. I could do this." I think it gives them an opportunity to think about their future and really dream about what they could be. Is it more work for us? I don't know. Maybe it's thinking differently. But I think it's good for kids and that's what we're supposed to be about.
Well, I'd like to add my congratulations to all three of you and the organizations that you represent and the fact that you represent the good work that's going on throughout our state. I mean, we've got folks from various different areas and, you know, all the different levels that you've got. And, you know, schools need great teachers and they need great leaders. And you guys exemplify what that is, to be a great leader in your area. And we really, the board really appreciates all of that hard work that you guys do. It's just a great opportunity for us to recognize you and to thank you for being here and thank you for all the hard work that we do. And we're going to do some pictures. We have a certificate for you and we're going to do pictures. So, just real quick, Eric, when you come up, Dina, he's in your district, so you'll get that. And Laura Jo, actually, you're in my district. And Greg is in Jim McNeese's district. So, we'll have some pictures. Now, before we do, principals, I'd like to let you know, because the next presentation is going to be about vaping and e-cigarettes. Some of you may want to stay and listen. I think it might be very, unfortunately, more relevant than we'd like for it to be. So, you're welcome to stay.
All right, Eric. Seems like a lot of those congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. I know. I know.
I did, we did. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we're all over it.
All right, get on, come on, Dina, there you go.
Perfect.
Okay, Laura Jo?
Laura Jo?
Laura Jo? You're next, dear.
She just get me. That's a whole sort of chair. Okay. That's something. Just like helping one of them know she's a particular about that, which is good.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Greg? Yeah. My Lord, that's a phenomenal record.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, our next agenda item will be a presentation to discuss and act on recommendations regarding vaping and e-cigarettes. And we will have Michelle Dombrowski joining us via telephone, I believe. We're getting connected.
Okay. All right. Okay, Mark, welcome. And I think you have some folks here with you, hopefully that were involved in your committee. So, we really look forward to hearing the report. I know we were very interested in your report last month and then now you're going to have some recommendations for us, so welcome.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, board members and Commissioner Watson. I appreciate the opportunity to share the recommendations that were developed from the work group that stemmed from your May board meeting. Following the May board meeting, we were, I was asked to form, gather a group and have a discussion, hopefully to come up with recommendations. We were under a fairly tight timeline, but we were able to get a group together. We were able to meet on May 24th here in the agency. And on the slide, you can see the individuals who were present. Dr. Watson was able to be there. Jordan Roberts, who you heard at the May board meeting from KDHE. David Stubblefield, again, he presented at the May board meeting. He was able to join us by phone. Bob Davies, who is with the Holton School District. Angie Staubommer, who represents Kansas Association of School Boards. Hina Shaw from the Kansas Health Institute. Mark Farr from the Kansas National Education Association. Sarah Prem, who wore two hats, representing Tobacco-Free Kansas Coalition and the American Lung Association. Myself. And then Sarah also brought Addison Schlatter, and I'll apologize for the name Addison, if I didn't get that right, who is a student at KU that is working with the American Lung Association over the summer. So, again, and we also invited the executive director from KFORD, who also is a faculty member at Washburn University and a family practitioner. And neither of them were able to attend. The family practitioner had to see patients for some reason. So, but we still, we covered a wide variety of health advocates and champions in the state and hopefully led to some fairly well-thought-out recommendations. The assigned task that we were given was to develop recommendations to present to this board on vaping e-cigarettes in schools at this June 2019 board meeting. The overarching goal that we looked at in terms of how to organize our discussion around was that, specific to vaping products or use of e-cigarettes, we wanted to create school environments where students choose to not begin use of those products or if they are currently using, have access to cessation guidance or strategies. And on the surface, we typically think, when you look at these products and them not being legal to be used by the vast majority of the student body, you would think that the emphasis would be on the former part of that rather than the latter. But in our discussions with school personnel and health educators, it is obvious that this is, that we have to address the latter half of that to help those students who are currently using vaping products and try to educate them and provide them resources in order to achieve cessation. So, we came up with four recommendations. The first recommendation is that beginning in the upcoming school year 2019, 2020, that education start being offered to school staff, students, parents, and the general public on a variety of topics. One of these is the dangers of e-cigarette use and vaping. One of the questions that I was, have been asked recently was, "Well, what are the dangers posed by e-cigarette use?" And my response was, aside from lifetime addiction to nicotine, there are others. But that's where we need to start, is recognize that these are electronic nicotine devices that have a purpose of addicting their user to nicotine. Second topic, rate and increase of use information from the Communities That Care Survey and the Youth Risk Behavior Survey data. The reality is that we don't have much data to look at, don't have much trend data to understand exactly the scope of the problem that we are facing. And this data will help us with that. The evolution of the nicotine delivery systems and Jordan's presentation in May showed you how it has evolved from devices that look like cigarettes and were referred to as electronic cigarettes to devices now that are very confusing to look at and envision that they are actually vaping devices. Also, pattern of initiation of use. policies and procedures. David Stubblefield from Blue Valley talked about how they have woven in their vaping policies into their code of conduct and their enforcement policies. So we would need to, to try to share those best practices and that information with schools across the state. Jordan introduced you to the Kansas Vape-Free Schools Toolkit, and so we can certainly help get that resource out there and educate schools and parents with that. And also tobacco-free and vape-free school signage. Much of the signage, if it hasn't been updated in the last couple of years, and you have tobacco-free school grounds, more than likely, there is not a representation or language specific to vaping. So if a school district were to adopt, include vaping or electronic cigarette use into their tobacco-free school grounds policies, they don't really have the signage to, to reflect that. And there is free signage available through KDHE that does show some representation, but you really kind of have to know what you're looking for because it doesn't spell out vaping. It has a symbol of a device, but I think we need to, if, if you are working at a school district and you're, you're at your, you know, softball game, football game, and you have tobacco-free school grounds wherever, and you have somebody that is vaping on, on school property, and you're telling them that, that that is not allowed, they, they may contest that because it doesn't explicitly say it or doesn't explicitly show it. So, so we need to look at the signage. The second recommendation, and, and again, going back to the first recommendation, the first recommendation suggests that we start the, the education this year because we're already behind. And the, the task force is the second recommendation, but the, the work group thought basically that we can't wait for the task force to come up with their plan and just continue to, to wait. We have to go with the information that we have and the resources that, that we, that we have available and start the education process now. That being said, the second recommendation is to form a task force, including representatives from the following. And, and all of these were represented at that meeting, with the exception of the Kansas State Board of Education. We have KSDE, KDHE, Kansas Association of State School Boards, Kansas National Education Association, the American Lung Association, Tobacco-Free Kansas Coalition, Kansas Health Institute, the Kansas Association of Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance, Keford, Kansas Governor's Office, Kansas Attorney General's Office, Kansas Legislature, Kansas School Nurse Organization, Kansas State High School Activities Association, medical professionals such as representative from the American Association of Pediatrics, school district administrators, United School Administrators, students, Kansas K-12 students, retailers, and businesses that may be selling these products, pharmacies. CVS, several years ago, stopped selling tobacco products in their, in their stores. And I believe that, and I think Jordan?
Yep. Walgreens increased to 21.
Okay. Walgreens increased theirs to, you have to be 21 or older to, to sell. But we have to look at where these products are being purchased and, and work with, with those retailers. And also Kansas colleges and universities. Third recommendation is to add content on vaping to the Kansas Model Curricular Standards for Health Education. I know you just approved these last November. And after that, you added CPR requirement on, on top of that. But if you look at the current model curricular standards, there is absolutely no reference to vaping in that document. So they are already, particular to vaping, they, they need to be updated. And then the fourth is to create a central web-based information hub on, on vaping, so that whether you are a parent, a student, a health advocate, a, a school staff member, having a central location where you can go to and be assured that you are getting the, the latest and best information on, on vaping in, in Kansas. So those are the four recommendations to, we do have Jordan Roberts present. We have, I'm sorry. Yep. Bob Davies is also, also here. I'm just giving you options for who you might want to ask questions of. I can answer some. I can tell you how to get your parking validated. Sarah Prem is here. Addison Schlatter is, is also here. We have Linda Shepherd, who represents Kansas Health Institute. Hina Shaw was not able to, to be here today. We also have a representative from the Kansas Association of School Boards. We, Jordan Brewer from the Attorney General's Office was, is, is, is right here. And anybody else that wants to toss their, their ring in that?
You want to come out here? She's American Cancer Society.
Well, by all means, we'll, we'll take the American Cancer Society.
First of all, before we start with questions, could we have all of you that participated in this very hurried, I mean, we asked, I mean, this is like a quick turnaround. If you'd just stand up so we can thank you. We know this was a very short turnaround, but when we had the presentation last month on vaping, it was, I think for, we've, we've been hearing about it from our schools. I think everybody has been, but it was quite eye-opening as far as what is out there. And we felt so strongly that we needed to get some information out to schools. So we really appreciate your quick turnaround. And I've already got a whole host of questions here, so we'll be able to, to ask some questions and look forward to hearing your expertise. So we'll start with Jim Porter.
Thank you. My question is to Addison because I think students know more than the rest of us. Addison. How prevalent is the use of either vaping or tobacco among, that is about a three-part question, among your, among your friends, among your peers?
Sure.
How, how have you seen that increase or decrease? And where did you first see it start? And where are you in your academic?
I'm a junior now at KU.
Okay. That was actually four questions.
You can make it five if you want.
No, I'm three.
I would say that I probably started seeing people vape and use electronic nicotine devices, like my sophomore year of high school. In middle school, there was like a big stigma against smoking and using tobacco nicotine products because all of the delivery devices were gross, like tobacco smells bad, cigarettes smell bad, so people weren't really using them. But then Juul and other products like it came out with delivery devices that have nicotine in flavored pods. And so it tasted good, it smelled good, and it was also kind of covert because there's, you know, not as much vape in the air. And so you could do it in class, you could do it on campus, and people wouldn't notice. I would say that probably half of my school vaped in high school, at school, in class, at parties, at sporting events. In high school, the older we got, the more prevalent it became. In college, I would say that, I don't, I, I don't know if I could say half, but a, a good chunk of my peers and my friends as well use it because I think there's a lot of misinformation about the dangers. People assume that it's not as dangerous just because it doesn't taste bad. But it, it definitely is.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Anne Ma.
Thank you. I have several, so I'll just ask a few, and then if you have somebody else. I noticed we said we're gonna, are we going to make a presentation on this at the annual conference?
I don't believe that is in the program right now.
Could it be?
I, I have a, a say or two with the annual conference, so.
I thought he might. Anyway, I mean, it just seems obvious. If we're going to deliver education, that's the most obvious place we have to do it. And when we say we're going to offer education, what does that mean?
Angie, not to put you on the spot, but Angie Stalbommer mentioned that KASB had opportunities that, that they thought this year that they could potentially offer some, some education.
I mean, is it going to be like a package of materials? It's going to be online on our website?
Yeah, I think that, that it's, it's open. It could, it could be some online, access to online resources, but it can also be face-to-face in-person, in-person trainings.
Can I follow that up with KASB? Because you guys do a lot of summer workshops and stuff, right? Is that kind of what you were thinking? I think getting this information out to local school boards is a great idea.
Correct. And that's what Angie was talking about, is that, and we're doing that all year long, providing in-service training to staff members. We do a lot of work just directly with superintendents, administrators. I, I mean, I talk to people who are in school leadership who don't know what a vape pen is, and explaining that to them. So just giving sort of a 101 level, here's what vaping looks like. Yes, it is dangerous. Yes, it's illegal if you're under 18, things like that.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Anne.
Thank you. And you might be familiar with the meth project, you know, up in, was it North Dakota? Huge effort, they, I mean, they had a huge meth problem, and they went after it in every way they could. They had billboards up with pictures of girls, like, you know, this is what I look like going to prom, and you know how, what meth face looks like. They had videos, like, you know, a kid going in, "I really love my mom, I really like her," and then it switches to the guy knocking his mom down and stealing her money. You know, that, just attack it every way you can. But then in the end, they also had resources available for when kids realized they did have a problem to get off of it and free help to make that happen. Are we working on any kind of a package like that?
Yes, we are. We have our first conversation with a few state organizations about a vape-free prevention, like a vape-prevention social media campaign, right, that we are going to focus on with schools. This is like, we haven't even had our first conversation yet, but that sounds exactly like what we're trying to do.
I mean, a big poster with some, we talked about some kid last month who, like, they asked him why he vaped. He says, "I can't stop."
Right.
You know, a big poster with a kid, like, "I can't stop," you know, just something to really, this really happens and this is really where it lands. But I hope somebody's putting that together.
Yes, I am working on that.
Who's working on the new signage, that it clarifies that when we have a football game, you can't vape or smoke?
Right. So currently, KDHE provides a free signage to those who have comprehensive policies. And so what the signs look like right now is, is tobacco-free grounds. It does not say vape-free grounds or e-cigarette-free grounds, but it does have an e-cigarette emblem on it. So it does note, like, it's chew tobacco, traditional cigarette, and a vape. But it, we, that's what we discussed, is that that's probably not enough. So here, at KDHE, we are going to look at an internal conversation about updating those signs. And then possibly with that vape-free schools campaign, that social media campaign, possibly we could, we could brand those signs with whatever this campaign looks like. So I think there's a lot of possibilities there.
We have some by the time school starts and football season.
We have some, we don't, we, I don't know.
We have a printing department.
Say it again?
We have a state printing department.
That is very true, yeah. Well, we could, if it was that, you know, if you feel like it's that big of a priority that we should rush this, for sure, we can, we can look into that and pushing that forward.
I think, you know, with the growth we've, the, you know, exponential growth, you know, football season isn't too soon to start.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I'm also wondering, K-DOR, doesn't K-DOR have responsibility for checking sales of tobacco and thus this as well?
I, I would say yes.
Are they at the table?
However, they were not, and they were not part of the meeting, and you can certainly add people to the, to the task force. I do know that, that the, the amount of tax on vape products is fairly small compared to what there is on typical tobacco products.
Well, it's not that. I'm thinking of the enforcement of the age of buying. I mean, doesn't K-DOR have the tobacco group that goes out and makes sure you're not selling cigarettes to?
Yes, they do.
Okay. Because like, I was driving home the other day, and I hadn't even noticed it before we did this, but right across the street from Highland Park High is a vaping store. And is anybody going there to check to make sure they're not selling to the high school kids on break? That's, so that's just something I think K-DOR ought to be in, we ought to.
Yeah, that's a really good suggestion.
Make them.
I have contacts there, so we can add them to this conversation.
I think that's it. Thank you.
Dina, there we go. I've got my mic on now. Dina Horst.
Thank you. Well, Anne hit upon many of the things that I had questions or comments about, but I do sit on the prescription drug and opioid committee or task force or whatever. I'm not sure exactly what the rest of the title is, but that, I did mention it to that group, and I have received some information from some individuals about resources. So I will share that with you. If you give me your email address, I'll forward them to you as I receive them. And this, I wish we would have seen the issue as being much more of an issue when it first started, instead of maybe thinking also that it was not as bad as it has turned out to be. So thank you very much for being willing to meet and take care of some recommendations that look really pretty good to me in a very short period of time. And I'm sure they will grow and we will be very, we are not done with this issue, I'm sure. But I did have a question about the toolkit. And what, does it exist now?
Yes.
And could you kind of give us an overview of what is in that toolkit?
Yeah, yeah. So the toolkit was created, we started in October of 2018, and we got it out on March, March 2018. And so it was, it was really to answer this overwhelming request from all these school districts, can you come present to our teachers, to our students, to our, our parents? We, we don't know how to address this issue. So what it does, it provides best practices to addressing tobacco in schools. And we are treating tobacco like, we are treating e-cigarettes like tobacco. Surprise, surprise, the best practices, recommendations aren't updated yet with electronic cigarettes in them, so we are treating them as, as a tobacco product, which is what they are. We have model policies in there. We have communications recommendations, policy and enforcement, all of these. You basically could take this toolkit as a student group, as somebody who is in school, and, and go to your school board and, and pass this policy with this toolkit. That's what it was created for.
That, that sounds like, like a winner.
Thank you. Thank you so much. they will grow, and we will be very, we are not done with this issue, I'm sure. But I did have a question about the toolkit, and what, does it exist now?
Yes.
And could you kind of give us an overview of what is in that toolkit?
Yeah, yeah. So the toolkit was created, we started in October of 2018, and we got it out on March, March 2018. And so it was, it was really to answer this overwhelming request from all these school districts, can you come present to our teachers, to our students, to our, our parents? We don't know how to address this issue. So what it does, it provides best practices to addressing tobacco in schools, and we are treating tobacco like, we are treating e-cigarettes like tobacco. Surprise, surprise, the best practices, recommendations aren't updated yet with electronic cigarettes in them, so we are treating them as, as a tobacco product, which is what they are. We have model policies in there, we have communications recommendations, policy and enforcement, all of these, you basically could take this toolkit as a student group, as somebody who is in school, and, and go to your school board and pass this policy with this toolkit. That's what it was created for.
That, that sounds like, like a winner.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you again for, for all that you've done and will do in the future, so.
Thanks so much.
Jean Clifford.
Thank you. Some of the schools in my area are having difficulty with the disciplinary actions that are going to be most effective, because they are treating it as, as a cigarette or in a similar way, suspension from activities for a period of time. But it seems to me that there's more of an addictive quality to the vaping. So is there an opportunity to look into more effective disciplinary strategies that will actually really work with these?
And that's actually something that the whole nation is looking at right now, is how do we address this issue? Because it seems like suspension isn't doing the trick. And the truth is, is that, these kids are probably addicted to this, to this device. I mean, this, specifically, the Juul product contains significantly more nicotine than a cigarette, right? So we actually do have some cessation devices, some cessation resources in the toolkit as well. The Truth Initiative is a national anti-smoking organization that has created a text to quit, like, an app for young people, ideally 18 to 25, but people under the age of 18 can utilize that. The Kansas Tobacco Quit Line also provides youth counseling with, for their services. So there's a few resources for that. And our number one recommendation would be for kids who do get caught vaping, is to provide them a cessation resource, is to, I think it would be a best practice to coach school nurses into how to talk to, to people about tobacco addiction and stuff like that. So we are kind of, we're trying to figure out the best way to enforce that, and trying to avoid judicial options, right? We don't really want kids to be introduced to the, to the criminal justice system unnecessarily. And not that this isn't illegal, but we have to recognize that these kids are probably addicted to this product.
You're right. Is there any opportunity to look at things which might have been an effective strategy with cigarettes, but which are not with vaping, so that we don't use those strategies with students who are vaping? For example, the suspension from activities is pretty common, but then you just allow them to, to stay at home or not, not be involved in sports where maybe they would at least not be accessing that for a few hours? You know, it, it sort of turns it around a little bit.
In our discussion, as part of the group, David Stubblefield from Blue Valley indicated that they treat vaping similar to how they treat alcohol and, and other drugs, that that's, that's in terms of their enforcement and their code of conduct, they basically are treating that similarly. But you bring up a very good point in that if you have a student that is suspended, and they're spending, you know, three days at home alone, the, the chances are that they're probably, for vaping, they're probably going to be vaping over, over that time, and just increasing their, their addiction to that. So I think that that's, that's where we really need to get a number of the best heads together and, and, and look at it from a multifaceted point, and, and look at the lessons that were learned from cigarettes, and, and what mistakes were made along the way there.
Janet Wall.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a few, a couple of statements and a couple of questions. First of all, I like the group that you're organizing, I think this is wonderful. I think we're missing parents. I think we need some parents, possibly you could contact PTA, they're a good group to provide parents for. And also, I'm happy that you're, you've included students, K-12 students. I think maybe you need to include some post-secondary, and I'd go both to community colleges and four-year universities, you know, to get, kind of get a wide variety, because obviously they're doing it there also, and maybe they need some help too, you know?
And to add to that, all, all for, all of our post-secondary big schools, like Pitt State, Forhays, those are all tobacco-free schools. They all are, their campuses are completely tobacco-free, so they have some very good input for this.
Maybe there are community colleges and places like that.
Yeah, there are a few too, yeah.
They could do that. So I think that, that's exciting. I hate to make the committee still large, because I know how difficult that can be. My, I think that one of the challenges you face, as far as I'm seeing, is the education of parents and community, which is always a challenge. So I would hope the committee would discuss how they would do that. And the other, other thing that I just said, one other thing that I'd like to bring up is, I know how, I've served on too many of these committees, and I know how long they, how long it takes. I would like to suggest that you look at, if something you really, really solidly support, that we need to do this, and this is very, very, bring it to us right then. Don't wait till you get that whole report, because I am extremely concerned, I've had so many contacts regarding this, that I would like for us to enact it immediately, if that's what it takes, you know? So that's what I would appreciate. And thank you all so much for coming back this quickly with what you have. This is just amazing, what you've done. Thank you.
Going to your point about parents, I believe David Stubblefield may have shared, if he didn't share in May, he did share in our, our meeting about a education session. They had four parents just this spring, where they had approximately 300 parents show up and address vaping, and, and felt like it was extremely impactful, similar to your experience in, in May. It was kind of the, the aha phenomenon of, wow, you know? And, and just after this presentation in, in May, had several staff members from the agency that came by and said, you know, "I've, I've seen those before, but I, I didn't know what they were," or "I, I have, you know, I, I saw that my son had one of these, and I was unaware of it." And so part of it is, is really awareness, and we're just, there's so much of our, our state population that is not aware.
Right. And, and like I say, in the communities, maybe we could get out to chambers, to Lions Clubs, to all the various groups, you know, because I reg, I believe there's a lot of community members that absolutely have no clue this is going on, you know? So I think we need to make, work hard to make everyone aware of this. Thank you.
I have a question, and I don't know if this should go to somebody from the AG's office or KASB, but when, because our schools are tobacco-free, but this really isn't tobacco, it's nicotine. So I'm assuming maybe our schools are going to need to do some policy changes, or are there some necessarily, necessary laws that are going to need to be changed? I don't know exactly, and maybe either of you or both of you could kind of address that.
Well, I can speak to school board policy, and we have updated in our recommended policies that we provide to districts, both for staff and students, updating that language to include not just tobacco, but any nicotine delivery device. So policies are addressing some of that. Of course, the, the harder piece that we have is the, the patron, the parent at the football game who wants to ignore it. We don't have a ton of ability to control that behavior, or, you know, punish that behavior in some way.
And I can address the question about the laws. E-cigarettes are actually considered a tobacco product in the state statutes. It is a crime for a minor to possess any tobacco product, whether it's a cigarette, chewing tobacco, electronic cigarette, it's all roped into that. Unfortunately, it's an infraction, that's, I think, a $25 fine for anybody under 18 to possess this product. It's also not considered a contraband item for a minor to possess it. Right now in our statute, it's probably something we need to look at changing. Where cigarettes and other tobacco products are, it can be seized right away and destroyed. This would unfortunately have to go back most likely to the, the parent if, if anybody requested it. We haven't had a lot of changes to the electronic cigarette statutes over the last couple legislative sessions, definitely needs to be updated. A lot of other states are working actively on addressing this. I am part of the National Association of Attorneys General. We have regular meetings on, regular phone calls on electronic cigarettes. I'm up to date on what a lot of other states are doing. There's a big push for the Tobacco 21 as well, which would include electronic cigarettes. Our state doesn't have a statewide 21 age limit, but there are communities here that do have 21. Unfortunately, for example, when you're in Shawnee, Kansas, you can be 18 and buy it. You can go over to Mission, and you can't get it until you're 21. All they have to do is drive a mile, a lot of these kids can get it still. So there are other things that will need to be addressed as far, as far the laws go.
So is there any conversation on working with the legislature this next year and looking at something to address this, that you're aware of?
I believe that the Department of Revenue is going to address some changes to their statutes. A lot of this fits under their Cigarette and Tobacco Products Act, and that is something that I have been in conversation with them about, and I believe they will address it hopefully next year.
Okay, very good. And also, Michelle, I know you're on the phone, but you're on mute. If you have a question, you can sure unmute and ask a question. Guessing you're still there. I know Anne's got another question. I'll go ahead and go to Anne, and then, Michelle, if you have a question, we'll go to you next.
Thank you. It's just one about the age of, of the training. I was laughing, we were at Disney World last week, and I was walking behind our 10-year-old granddaughter and my husband, and all of a sudden she just brought it up, "Did you know there, you know, kids are vaping?" And my husband's like, "Oh, I'm going to educate her about this," but she educated him, and she just kept talking and talking. She goes, "Did you know it's even worse than cigarettes? You can get hooked on this stuff." So even in fourth grade, somebody's been talking to him about it. So does our toolkit go down to grade school? Because obviously 10 years old is not too early.
Yeah, no, that, it's definitely not too early. So I created the toolkit, I run the Resist Tobacco Prevention Program, which is a statewide youth-led tobacco prevention program that's focused on sixth grade through 12th grade, just because of that learning, you know? Like, if we're having a conversation with fourth graders, it looks a lot different than it does in seventh grade, but that's definitely something that we want to look into, into, it's never too early to educate young people. And, and a really effective way to educate young people is to have middle schoolers educate elementary schoolers about this.
Right, right. I mean, there are a lot of ways to do it.
Role model, yeah.
I mean, because we've talked about last month about fifth graders using it in school, so.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Michelle?
Michelle, any, yeah, I can hear you, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I think the biggest concern too is on the buses. We've got the younger children riding with the older children, it seems to be, I don't know if it's, if it's everywhere, but it seems to be kind of in the Blue Valley District, we were seeing some of that on the buses as well, from the older, like, eighth graders, and then the sixth graders were kind of catching on, on to that. So that was my biggest concern too, is are we going to be going a little bit younger, like, fourth and, fourth and fifth grade, before they get into the middle school, so they're educated early?
That's a good point, school buses, I hadn't even thought about that.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's not, it's not a good situation on the buses.
Any comments anybody has about that?
I mean, that's, that is definitely not the first time I've heard that, that this is an issue, and, and I think people, school, like, they contract with people who do their school buses, so that, that becomes an issue because their school policy is this, and so, yeah, that's definitely something that we need to consider when writing any model policies and things like that.
Okay, so the policies need to reflect transportation also, that kind of piece?
Definitely.
I think we're learning a lot today. Yeah. Okay. Board, if you take a look at your agenda item number 11, we actually, this is actually an action item, so Mr. McNeese?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion. It is moved that this Kansas State Board of Education accept the recommendations of the e-cigarette vaping work group to improve the health of the youth in Kansas schools.
Okay, we have a motion, and Deana has a second. Any other further discussion? Yeah, Anne?
Well, there's a lot that we've talked about doing that is not in the two recommendations, like, do we need to be making policy recommendations? Is this group going to continue to meet? Because it looks like we have a lot more stuff for them to work on. Does that need to be a separate motion?
No, I, from the looks of this, there's, one of the motions is a task force, and I'm assuming they will be coming back to us. And even as Janet suggested, if you have a recommendation that is kind of timely of the essence, we don't care if you bring a whole packet, or if you just bring one to us.
Well, that's what I'm wondering about, a timeframe for them to get back with, what policies do we need to, if nothing else, impose on local districts? Because I don't want to wait for a year from now to have policy recommendations.
I mean, I certainly think there's some that are probably more timely, and some that can probably come later. Randy, you have comment?
Well, I think KSB has policies up to date that will roll out in July, I think, is the timeframe. They've already had them last year, and they'll be updating them. So it will be in the next cycle for school districts to adopt those policies when they update from the recommended policies from KSB, because that happens two or three times a year, correct, in terms of the update? So the cycle for school districts to adopt can be as short as about every four months, I think, because of how KSB can stay on this. I, I think it's what's really important about the task force, and, and I, you know, the state board's talking about this, and there's a lot of conversation you did last month, but Jim, I remember you saying this, and, and I use this lightly, Jordan used the word epidemic last time. That is absolutely what we're seeing. I mean, when we're hearing 50% use, half of a, that, we've never seen that kind of use of a product, legal or illegal, in my lifetime at that rate. And so I think all of us are saying, this takes a different response of something we don't fully understand. So I appreciate, we're going to have to have a task force kind of dig into this. And I would say, as Janet has alluded to, Anne, which I think gets to, let's just put this on the agenda each month.
Okay.
And if there's nothing to report, we can pull it, but that gives you the opportunity to bring something. And, and finally, you know, I'm glad the Attorney General's Office here, the governor, this is, this needs to have a Kansas reaction to it. I mean, for it, for it to really be powerful.
So are we talking about, I mean, I'm looking for timeframes here, and we're, the task force will be formed by when?
This afternoon?
I'd say pretty darn quick, right?
Well, we're all assuming that, I just want to make sure, you know, we, we know.
Well, I, I believe we, we have the heart of a task force already in place.
First meeting's at 3:00?
10 minutes, yeah.
Okay, and if we have monthly updates, that will satisfy another concern I have, like, you know, when are we going to hear back?
I think that, you know, I can, I can start reaching out to people this week and, you know, see about availability, meeting, you know? I, again, I don't know that we can form, have a task force meeting and be back by July.
Right.
But I couldn't, you know, I, I could provide an update on where we are on the formation of a task force in, in July, and also potentially have more clarification on, on what our educational strategies might be able to be going into the, the upcoming year. And then hopefully have a meeting of the, the task force in some manner, probably in July at some point.
Randy?
And I know that KSB provides, again, model policies, districts can or cannot adopt, or can adopt with modification. I would encourage though, KSB, on this topic, to really alert school districts to take a serious look as they get ready to start the school year with handbooks and, and policy, about having a public discussion at their school board about adoption of such model policies, or, you know, changing those to meet whatever needs that they think they need to make. But just a, a point of emphasis, I think, that KSB could do as they release that, and for the summer.
Jim Porter?
Mark, the, Deana and I are going to start meeting well before the next board meeting to, to start talking about a legislative agenda to be discussed here at this level, which I'm not sure we've ever done before, but I don't know that, I've not been here as long as Janet. But we need, I'd like to work with the, you know, Attorney General's Office and others to see what, see if there's some recommendations, legislative recommendations that we can make that helps address this. We want to be a partner. I think you can see by our reaction that we're, we're very concerned about this, and we want to, we need to look at it from several different directions, you know, how we educate, but also if there's legislation that we can join others and recommend, and we need to at least have that discussion at this table.
Yeah, and, and I think partners such as the Kansas Health Institute can be very valuable in being able to help us identify other states and, and steps that, that they have taken, so we can, can learn from, from what they have done.
And if you can get that information to Deana or me, we'll, we'll, we'll start working on that.
Ben Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is just a parliamentary, this might be a question for Mark. Since we traditionally receive a policy one month and approve it the next month, we don't need to suspend, I would just want to make sure that we get this right, and we don't hang up things because of a procedural issue.
If, according to your policies, if you decide to vote for something on it as an action item that was not previously a receive item, then you would need a majority, a supermajority, so you'd need seven to suspend the rules to, to vote. so you'd need seven to suspend the rules to vote on that particular adoption.
It's listed for this action.
Because we asked this to come back, we asked them to bring something last month to this. Yeah. Okay, well, we do have a motion and a second to accept the recommendations of the E. cigarette vaping work group. I think we've had lots of discussions. Let's take, and Michelle, you're on the phone, you want to vote? Please do.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand. Michelle?
Aye, aye, yes.
Okay, we have a 10-0 on that. And I can't say how much we really appreciate everybody's efforts here that are here today. And I'm guessing some of you will continue to be on the task force, and we look forward to hearing from you. State board members, there will be either one or maybe two state board members on this, so if you are interested, please let me know, and we'll let Mark know then who will be our State Board of Education representative on the task force. Anything else, Mark?
Just thank you for seeing the importance of this and the willingness to act quickly.
Yeah, and we don't very often do things quite this quick. Okay, well, thanks again to everybody, and we appreciate it. And Board, we're going to take a 10-minute break. Your next item on the agenda is to act on new appointments for the Special Education Advisory Council. And we actually have two. We'll have 12A, which is a new appointment, and then 12B, which is reappointments. And these are going to both be separate motions. And then as far as your agenda's concerned, I believe the roster and the nominees are maybe start on page 31. Is that, yep, there we go. So if you want to refer to that in your agenda, you can do that. And Laura is here to help us through this today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairperson Bush, you took care of the first two minutes of what I was going to say.
Well, I'm glad I could help you out.
Thank you. So everyone's oriented now. So what I'm going to do is start out by talking about just item 12 generally. What is the Special Advisory, Education Advisory Council, which all of you are very familiar with? But most importantly, what are the requirements for filling positions on the Special Education Advisory Council? And then, like the chairperson said, we can move to item 12A, which is to take up the new appointments, that's the attachment there, and then item 12B, which is the motion to renew existing appointments for another term. So of course, the reason we're here is that on the Special Education Advisory Council, the members are able to serve two terms that are three years apiece. So we have three vacancies of members that have fulfilled their two terms, and so now we need to fill these vacancies. So when we fill vacancies on the Special Education Advisory Council, we do so by looking to the IDEA and to state statutes, which tell us what are the requirements to be a member of CAC. That's how we abbreviate that. And so the requirements to be a member, most importantly, is at least 51% of the council has to be either a person with a disability or the parent of a child with a disability. Now, in our state law, we added to that by broadening that to exceptionality, and we have some specific requirements around making sure that giftedness is represented on CAC, because of course, that's included within our special education laws in Kansas. So if you're looking at item 12A, the attachment to that, that last column on the right where it says fulfills requirement, that's what I'm talking about. So if that says yes, that indicates that it's either a person with a disability or the parent of a child with a disability. So we have to have that certain ratio there. If you're looking at 12B, if you're curious about within the existing CAC who fulfills that requirement, that's that middle column that also says fulfills require. So we look there first. Does it meet that minimum representation of 50%? And then we also look to, does the person's experience that they would bring to the position, would that adequately represent the position that is open? Okay? And so if the, if the state board takes this action today, CAC then would be completely filled in terms of membership, which is actually a fairly rare thing for CAC. There have been a number of years that we've gone without a charter school representative, for example, and we have one right now. So if all of this action is taken, all of these appointments would be fulfilled. Another thing that we consider that is not required by law is representation across state board regions. And so if you're looking at that item 12A attachment, you can see each nominee broken down by board region, and then we also break that down on that item 12B for the membership as a whole. And so right now, we are, if these nominations are accepted, we are fairly well-represented across the state with regions 2 and 3, each having one representative. Regions 5, 6, 7, and 8 would have two representatives. Regions 9 and 10 would have three representatives, and then Region 4 would have five representatives. And so that is, of course, with the information we have today, just like, I'm sure all of you know, CAC members move from time to time, but as far as we know today, that's what we have. So let's go now then to 12A, which is to our, our first motion. And so that was filling three positions. And so if you're looking at the item 12A attachment, you'll see it broken up into three sections. So one of the roles is a private school representative. The other is a representative of vocational community or a business organization that's concerned with the provision of transition services. And then on the next page is the homeless children representative. So after the nominations are collected, everyone that you see on this list met, met the requirements in terms of time. They submitted on time. What a group of our staff look for is they look first to, does the person, as reflected in this application, meet the requirements of the position that we need to fill? The other thing they look for is, does this person meet the requirement of being either a person with a disability or the parent of a child with a disability, always with a mind to keeping track of all of CAC? Have we met that required ratio set in IDEA of at least 50%? So that's the criteria that the staff use, and then, you know, a third to that, they do consider state board region to make sure we're getting representation from across the state. So I was not personally involved with the selection of the nominees, but that is the process and the criteria that is used. And so if you're looking at your item 12A attachment, our team represents, or recommends for the first position, Amy Wagner from Hutchinson for the private school representative, Carrie Wallace for the provision of transition services representative, and then Dr. Troy Pitch for the homeless children representative.
Okay, so Laura's done a lot of explaining about how CAC, and thank you.
Yeah.
I think, I believe that's helpful. Do we have questions about the process or anything that anybody needs to have clarified before we vote? Anybody? Okay, then I, are we ready for, Jim, do you have a question? Okay, Jim Porter, go ahead.
Yeah, I've already, I've already warned Laura. I've done, as you all know, several group work with people in the disability community, and they have occasionally complained to me that they make recommendations to the CAC that have, that have never, that don't get chosen. And I see that there are several people. However, you have adequately explained that. I just, since I warned you, I was going to ask the question. I'm going to bring it up again. But I think we need to be aware that there are people that are, that are concerned about representation and in the, in the future, and make sure that, that at least that's part of the discussion. I'd appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Laura? Seeing none, we have a motion to accept, and this will be 12A. So do we have a motion? Ben?
I move that the Kansas State Board of Education appoint Dr. Troy Pitch, Amy Wagner, and Carrie Wallace as representatives to the Special Education Advisory Council effective July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2022.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Jim McNeese. All in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, it looks like a 9-0 to me. Okay, so 12B.
Okay, 12B, the attachment for that is the existing membership, and the two members that need to be accepted if they're going to serve a second term on the council would be Mike Martin. Mike Martin is the past chair of CAC, and he's the parent of a child with an exceptionality, so he fulfills that requirement we've talked about. Becky Werner is eligible for renomination to her second term. She serves the position as LEA official. She's from the Wichita School District, and she does not fill the requirement of a person or a parent of a child with a disability.
Okay, any questions for Laura on the reappointment? Anybody? Okay, do we have a motion to approve then? Jim?
I move that, it's Kansas State. I move the Kansas State Board of Education reappoint Mike Martin and Bessie Werner for their second three-year terms on the Special Education Advisory Council effective July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2022.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Jim Porter, all in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, that looked like a 9-0 for me also. Okay, Laura, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, item number 13 is Professional Standards Board. I don't know who's speaking to this, because Michelle's not here, right?
Jim.
Jim Porter's speaking to this? Okay, so we have a recommendation of a new appointment and a recommendation of a reappointment.
And the new appointment is, and I'm probably the least competent to do this of anybody, but I, but I was asked to, and I don't generally say no. There has traditionally, I believe, and, say Brad's here, you may know more about this than I do, Brad, but has there always been a dean on the Professional Standards Board? Or there is a?
Higher ed, but I don't know if it requires that there be a dean.
Okay. I had a conversation with Deb Mercer, oh, a few months ago, just simply at a meeting saying, you know, you've been here as long as I have, and you can only be there six years. Is it about time? And she said, yes, I replaced Rick Ginsburg, who was the dean at KU, and we have traditionally had a dean on there. And so my understanding, which may or may not be accurate, is that the deans recommended Jim Trulove from, who is the dean of education at Pitt State University. I know that, I know that Kathy had some concern about the nomination and...
That could be tradition more than, but I, I don't know, and I apologize. Our, half of our agency is in Goddard today for three days of project-based learning training, so that's for Michelle and a lot of our staff. But, but I don't know if, if it requires a dean, but I know as long as I've been here, it's been a dean. So it could be more tradition.
And it is also my understanding that the deans, even though Deb Mercer made the recommendation, that the deans discuss this, they have a monthly meeting, and that was my understanding, they were going to discuss this and recommend somebody. So that's, that's probably what happened.
Do we know, are there, I mean, I know there's a couple of reappointments. Let me see what... Yeah, there's three reappointments. Are there any other new appointments to Professional Standards Boards that will be coming, or do you know?
I don't know if there's any new ones. I think this fulfills the group, but there could be, but I'm not aware of any new ones coming.
Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
I understand, talking to Michelle yesterday, there are additional ones that Anne brought up, that she had nominated someone, and they were waiting to bring, instead of bringing those just one at a time, they were ready to bring that next as a package, is what Michelle told me.
Okay, then I guess maybe what I'd like to see is for the new appointments to all come together, because I thought Laura's explanation was helpful for CAC, and maybe, maybe we would need an explanation for the Professional Standards Boards? Because I know we have the Professional Standards Board, we have the license review, and I think there's like two or three of them that the board does usually have input on. Is that correct?
Yes. Do you, are you suggesting that CAC, Professional Standards Boards, license, they all come?
No.
Or when you bring a group, bring them all?
Yeah, I mean, it like, I mean, it makes sense that they're reappointed in the summer. That makes sense. But if we have other new appointments, I'm fine going ahead and voting on the reappointments. And maybe this is just me, and if it is, fine, I'll... I just think if there's other new appointments, why don't we vote on them all together?
And, and if I may continue, Jean just brought up a question to which I do not know the answer, but I think it's a legitimate question. Does membership require Kansas residency? Because apparently, Dr. Trulove does not live in Kansas.
Oh.
According to...
Okay, maybe, can we table this, can we table 13A until July?
I think we can do whatever you want, Madam Chairman.
You just need a motion.
Jim said it better than I did.
I guess then I'll probably make a motion to table 13A until July. And Jim McNeese seconded that. All in favor? Okay, that looked like 9-0.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just think you need to be careful. I mean, I wouldn't want them to hold up a bunch of nominations if it meant they're going to be short on people when they meet, because they meet every month, right?
No, we meet four times a year.
Oh, it's every quarter?
We meet next week.
Oh, okay. But, anyway, we can keep an eye on it.
And we won't meet again until either September or October.
Okay, then we have time for the other.
Yeah.
Okay, so we can go to 13B, which is reappointments.
Yes, and if I would move...
Jim, please.
I move that the Kansas State Board of Education act on the following reappointments to the Professional Standard Boards, completing the second, whatever term it is, Elizabeth Plum, James Johnson, and Lisa Lauer.
Okay, so we have a motion for reappointments. Do we have a second? Deana? All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, abstained? Okay, so 8-0-1. Okay, all righty. Okay, that was a little confusing, but we got through it. All right. Okay, now we're going to have a preview of the KSDE Impact Institutes. And Don Giford, and I saw you, there you are.
I'm here.
Welcome, Don.
Hi, guys, thank you. I'm going to try to make this quick.
We can talk about vaping some more?
Did you get enough vaping time? That was, I'm sorry. Okay, so I am the co-chair of the Program Committee of the KSDE Summer Impact Institutes, along with Julie Ewing. And so we put together the program. So the Impact Institutes, for those of you who aren't aware, are our summer professional development opportunities for our teachers in the state of Kansas. So we are doing two of them this year. The first one is here at Washburn University, June 27 and 28. That's a Wednesday, Thursday, I believe, no, Thursday, Friday. And then we're going to Pratt Community College, July 17 and 18, for our second one. So for those of you who don't know, each session, we have breakout sessions that are 80 minutes long, which is a little longer than a normal breakout session. We also have workshops, 170 minutes long. Dr. Watson and Dr. Nguyen Swanner are going to keynote, and I'm not sure who's going to do which one, but at some point they are. At the end of the day, we always have door prizes of day two. These are just a list of some of the topics that will be included this year. We have included redesigned schools, so redesigned schools, we'll be talking about the four pillars. So we have personalized learning, community partnerships, real-world applications, and I always forget one. Success skills. Student success skills. And so we have school districts that are already involved in redesign that are actually going to be there to present, along with these topics and many more. You're welcome to attend. We encourage you to attend. We encourage you to reach out to schools and administrators and anybody. It's really a pretty energized, for those of you who attend, there's a lot of energy there. It's our, really our biggest professional learning experience for actual classroom teachers. About 70% of those who attend are actually classroom teachers, which, like I say, is probably our biggest opportunity to actually involve, to be involved with classroom teachers. probably our biggest opportunity to actually involve, to be involved with classroom teachers outside of just an educational program consultant going in field and actually addressing them. So any questions about that?
Anybody have any questions?
We sure hope you show up.
Ann? If you could only go to one day, would either one be better for us?
That would be really tough, because we try to divide everything up equally, and we try to spread out. So as you can imagine, there are a lot of different strands. So there's social studies people, math people, science people. And so we try to spread those out over two days so that they can all attend the different ones. So...
Just have to suck.
Yeah, I think you probably should go to day two, because I'm presenting on that day, and so there you should go. Or maybe day one, and Randy and Brad are doing the keynote, then maybe that's where you should go. I don't know.
Okay, any other questions for Don? Okay, thank you very much, Don. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we are moving to consent. Okay. Now, for consent, we have pulled item 15H. So we'll act on that after we approve the rest of the agenda. And just a reminder, we added 15U and V, which had to do with Conway Springs moving theirs to final order. So that's an addition. So if we could have a motion to approve consent, 15, including U and W and minus H. Is that confusing enough for you, Peggy? She didn't look at me. Yeah, well, we're going to pull, we've pulled H, so that will be voted on separately. Okay, Jim Porter, do you?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Okay, make the motion, second. Janet Waugh, all in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, it looks like a 9-0 to me. Okay, 15H is act on request from USD 500 KCK and USD 364 Marysville to fill vacancies under the prior Coalition of Innovative School District guidelines during the 2019-20 transition year. And Steve, I believe you had a question or discussion, I'm not sure which, on this.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not sure that we still have the Coalition of Innovative School District guidelines in place, so I want to make sure that we do.
The Coalition of Innovative School Districts have disbanded. They pulled out. The law's still there, but there's no one in it. And so when they pulled out, they came before the board and asked that the process by which KCK and one teacher in Marysville had gone through licensure that had been approved every year would live on. And so the board voted, and I'm going to look to Brad to make sure I'm not misspeaking here, voted to put that into process for any school district that followed the same process. And so you're now voting on those that went through KCK and the one teacher in Marysville, just like you would have if they were a member of the coalition. Does that help?
It does.
And I remember Steve asking that specific question before we voted to make sure that that, because that was sort of a prerequisite of them pulling out of the program.
Sure.
And just for clarity, this is not a teaching license. This is, even under the coalition, it's a certificate to teach in that district only for a specific set of courses that align to what you have a degree in. So it's, if they want to go somewhere else, that district would have to apply to hire. But we just give them a certificate to teach certain courses that they have a degree in in that specific district. But it's the same process that we did for the coalition.
Well, I think this answers my question admirably. I just want to mention this, that I think licensure has some real issues that we need to delve into, that it's a responsibility of this board to fix some of the fundamental flaws in the system that are related to licensure. But my questions have been answered. I thank you.
Do we have a motion to, oh, Janet, do you have a question? Okay, do we have a motion to approve 15H? Janet? I move that the Kansas State Board of Education approve Kansas City and Marysville districts to continue to fill vacancies with individuals qualified under the Coalition of Innovative School District guidelines for a specialized certificate for the 2019-20 school year. Okay, so we have a motion of second. Deena, all in favor, please raise your hand. It looks like a 9-0 to me. Okay, thank you very much.